Welcome to the Deschutes County Board of Commissioners meeting for Wednesday, October 27, 2021. First item on the agenda is Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me.
Pledge allegiance to the Father and the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is Citizen Input. So this is for any item that's not on the agenda. Seeing no one in the room, is there anybody on Zoom with a raised hand feature or a phone call possibly? Okay, seeing none, we have no other items today. Since our last meeting, we did talk about if there's multiple emails, we'll have a little condensed version of what we receive through emails. So seeing none, we'll move to the consent agenda.
Oh, could I just make a comment?
Please do.
I just want people to be aware that today, the county is announcing the breakthrough case numbers. I think this was incredibly important for the county. I know as someone who had COVID, and my husband had COVID, and we were both vaccinated, and I know a lot of other people that have been vaccinated and have had it, it is important to know that a lot of our cases, people are making comments about our community. We are the fifth highest vaccinated in the state. You know, we have had, what, almost 20,000 people with positives, and yet how many of those people are positives have been counted more than once? So I know, I know several people that went back and were retested and were positive, and I'm like, please, don't do that. It just adds to our numbers. So just be aware that that will be discussed today in our health COVID meeting. So I thank you, Health Department, for bringing those numbers forward for the public. It's actually for since, gosh, since March, we've had breakthroughs. So that's, that's good to know. Thank you for that addition. I'll move the consent agenda.
All right.
Sorry, I just wanted everyone to know that it's, you know, it's up there.
I will second, but I also just wanted to say that I am still interested in this question of the, the tax foreclosed property receipts, exploring, putting those to a dedicated purpose as opposed to just distributing them to all of the local taxing districts.
So for discussion, we were provided spreadsheet for the last few years about how exactly those numbers are sent out, the dollars to the districts. Yeah, so I mean, if you want to bring up another topic on that, we could schedule it as a discussion item. I don't know.
I, I would like to discuss that as another item, possibly as something to explore legislative action on, and definitely something that we would want to discuss with all of the, all of the taxing districts before we, you know, pursued such a change.
Very good. Any other discussion? So for the four items on the consent agenda, Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. Item number five, consideration of board signature for a document for Ben Lepine School District Intergovernmental Agreement. It looks like Tom Coon's ready to go.
Yes, hello, commissioners. For the record, I'm Tom Coon, Community Health Manager at Deschutes County Health Services Public Health, and with me is Amy Snyder. If you'd like to introduce yourself, Amy.
Hello, I'm Amy Snyder. I am the Healthy Schools Supervisor in Prevention.
Yes, so we are here today to request approval of the contract between Ben Lepine Schools and Deschutes County for the Healthy Schools Program. This is a three-year contract which runs through June 30 of 2024. Total funding for the program is $806,998, which will also be matched by the county, but this contract is just for the funds that the school will be providing. And that's broken up by year, starting at $161,000 in year one, $260,000 in year two, and $385,000 in year three. A total of seven staff will be hired by Deschutes County during this time, including one supervisor, who is Amy, and then we will hire two public health specialists each year who will work directly in the schools. And so for year one, we'll have three staff, year two, five staff, and then by year three, we'll have all seven staff onboard. So this is obviously the project we presented to you on earlier this month and that we've been working so hard on and was generously approved by you in the Budget Committee, and we're very excited about it, and this is the contract to make it official. So please let us know if you have any questions.
Are there any questions?
I don't have any questions. I'm very excited about this project and this partnership with the school district, and I just see this as sort of the, the business administrative housekeeping of continuing with that partnership.
Yeah, we have reviewed this at the Budget Committee meeting. That was the kind of the go, no-go point in time, and then also a really good review of this whole project earlier this month.
Well, truly, it's going to be important if you, I was just reading that the opioid overdose number is now 96,000 for the country, which is extremely high, you know, getting on top of problems. We need to keep our kids healthy. They haven't really been in school for a year, and I'm really hoping that, that this program can make a serious impact on the health of our students. I, I just feel so badly that their education has been, you know, diminished. I mean, if they're going to grad, you know, if they've been in school for 13 years, no, really, they will be, have been in school for 12 years when they graduate. So thank you, Amy, for your leadership on this.
Is there a motion?
I move that we have board signature of Ben Lepine School District Intergovernmental Agreement, document number 2021-651.
Second.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. Now we have a document number and an agreement for the business case. Okay.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you very much.
At this time, item number six, this is a public hearing to approve conveyance of county-owned property to the city of Redmond. So while, if you want to do introduction to the topic, and I'll open a public hearing on the matter.
The purpose of this public hearing is for the Deschutes County Board of Commissioners to review and consider approval of conveyance of county-owned property to the city of Redmond by Board Order Number 2021-053, and authorize the Deschutes County Property Manager to execute the documents associated with the conveyance of county-owned property located south of Southwest Salmon Avenue and Southwest 35th Street and east of Southwest Salmon Court in Redmond.
So I think, let's open up the public hearing on this matter to see if there's anybody to testify. There's no one in the room. Is there anybody on Zoom or a phone number possibly? So seeing none, we have no public testimony on the matter. So I'll close the public hearing. And for deliberation, the next item is going to be kind of like this also. We've, we have reviewed this previously. I think it was an executive session to kind of understand what these parcels are as a board. I was able to look them up by the tax lot number and get a reminder of exactly that little parcel. Kind of this first one is in the middle of a developed area, and it talks about, yeah, stormwater possibilities and community ownership for the city of Redmond. Is there any other thoughts, deliberations?
I just wanted to ask, besides it being used as, you know, stormwater catchment area, there was also a little bit of discussion about it being available as open space for the community. Did, did the city say anything about what, what kind of open space they would create there, or is it?
Sure. I think that the, that the formation of the stormwater management, whether that's above grade or below grade, that's to be determined, and I believe that would have impact on what the open space may look like. So they're, they're not in the design phase yet, but they're, they, they're the ones that said that they want to create open space, but I just don't know the specifics on that.
Okay, thank you.
I think this is kind of the end of a, an easement or a public path between, behind a bunch of houses there, too. So there could be like a nice little path to go to this, maybe a picnic table, but yeah, and that's the future, that's the future.
I was picturing like a very shallow, you know, very shallow basin, grass, you know, yeah, maybe a play structure or something like that, but I was just curious if they had thought about it yet.
Future steps, yep.
No, I think it's great. We acquired it. We've had it for 14 years, and now it seems like it's an appropriate move. Thank you, Kristy, for all the cleanup that you're doing. I so appreciate it.
So is there a motion?
Okay, I move to approve the conveyance of the county-owned property to the city of Redmond and consideration of the board signature for order number 2021-053. Do I need to?
I think that was in the introductions, the rest of the story.
Yes. So, okay, to, oh, and to authorize the Deschutes County Property Manager, Kristy Bollinger, to execute the documents associated with the conveyance of county-owned property located at the southeast corner of Northwest Greenwood Avenue and Northwest 32nd Street in Redmond.
I think that's.
Oh, I read the wrong one. I'm so sorry. Okay, well, that was good. Do you want me to go back and change that wording?
So you had the board order.
Right, okay, the property manager, oh, the conveyance of property located south of Southwest Salmon Avenue and Southwest 35th Street and east of Southwest Salmon Court in Redmond. Sorry about that.
Second.
Hopefully, that's clearing the record.
I'm sure it won't be. Sharon, don't yell at me. I'm sorry.
Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And chair votes yes.
Oops.
The next item, item number seven, public hearing to approve conveyance on county-owned property, also by order number. So if you have introduction, please, Kristy.
Sure. The purpose of this public hearing is for the Deschutes County Board of County Commissioners to review and consider approval of conveyance of county-owned property to the city of Redmond by, by Board Order Number 2021-054, and authorize the Deschutes County Property Manager to execute the documents associated with the conveyance of county-owned property located at the southeast corner of Northwest Greenwood Avenue and Northwest 32nd Street in Redmond.
So this is an open public hearing on the matter. No one is in the room. Is there anyone on Zoom or telephone call possibly? Okay, so seeing none, I will close the public hearing on this matter. So the one question I have, and I might have mentioned this before, is it looks like this is kind of a right-of-way opportunity for the city, open up an intersection, but has the surrounding property owners been notified? So, because it's kind of the corner of a property also.
Yeah, so my understanding is the property to the east, that large swath of unimproved land, that's going through the process for development, so that the notification will be done in that process.
Okay. Yeah, so you just look, it is kind of the corner notch of a parcel. So as I say, would that property owner would have been notified at all that this is?
Yes, exactly. Yes.
It's coming in the future. It hasn't been done yet.
Well, we, yeah, exactly. And we also have to, by state statute, advertise in the newspaper for two consecutive weeks, so that we've.
For this public hearing?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, no, I guess that's, well, I was making sure something was out there. That's exactly it. Okay. Any other questions or thoughts? Motion?
So I'll move approval of the conveyance of county-owned property to the city of Redmond, order number 2021-054, authorizing the Deschutes County Property Manager to execute the documents associated with the conveyance of county-owned property located at the southeast corner of Northwest, I'm sorry, Northwest Greenwood Avenue and Northwest 32nd Street in Redmond.
I'll second the motion.
Very good. And so acknowledging, this is really just a smaller little even rectangle on the corner of a property.
1306 square feet. It's pretty teeny.
Okay, with that, any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. Thank you. Item number eight, discussion of an appeal, hearings officer approval for Thornburg Destination Resort.
I've been emailing and texting Peter, letting him know that we.
We're rolling this morning.
That we're rolling, that we're moving quickly. So I don't, hopefully, he's watching and on, on the way, but I don't see them here just yet.
Okay, yeah, there's no rush, you know, so this is a morning meeting. There's only a few items. After this, we will do a COVID update, and the COVID update was confirmed for possibly before 10 o'clock, so we'll just, you know, stand by for the appropriate people to be joining us for this matter, and then following will be COVID update.
If we want to cover some other items.
Sure.
Right now, I, I've got one or two.
Yeah, other items then.
So during our last discussion of ARPA fund allocations, we talked about the 1017 project, and I've learned some more about that project, and I'm very excited about it. I've also talked to the High Desert Food and Farm Alliance about their Give and Grow Program, which is essentially a parallel kind of process where they are already, right now, having, having farmers grow another row of produce and, and donate that to local food banks and, and other kind of venues to, to, to get food to people who need nutritional assistance. So they will be preparing, or they've, I think they've already submitted a, a request, kind of parallel and similar to the 1017 request. And as I, as I was digging around a little bit at the, at the food banks to understand kind of the importance of these, these different streams of, of food, one of the things I learned was that the, the 1017 project is very special in that it works with local ranchers and provides, you know, very fresh, locally grown, and, you know, probably very sustainably grown beef to those nutritional assistance efforts. At the same time, food banks, most food banks through USDA receive, also receive a substantial volume of, of, you know, beef that was generated through national programs. We don't know where it comes from, you know, it could have been frozen for a long time, but, you know, what this person was saying was that, you know, the food bank has a lot of beef. It's, you know, maybe there's, there's demand for more, there is definitely demand for more, but they have a lot of beef, but they don't have a lot of fresh produce to deploy to people. So, so they emphasize that the Give and Grow Program and programs like that, that put vegetables and, you know, potatoes and things like that into the local food banks are extremely important as well.
Yeah, so let's bring those together. I mean, as I say, now that we've looked at different programs, all of a sudden, yeah, let's, let's talk about how we're going to support these efforts locally. As I say, the, the bottom line for me is the production locally. That's the exciting part.
Yeah.
Yes, you're not bringing something in from Chile.
Well, the USDA, then, then it should be from somewhere within the nation, but.
Perhaps it might be.
But still, you know, Nebraska, whatever. Great, yeah. Likewise, I, I'm really excited that we can do something to help people who in need locally, but also to support our local food-producing businesses.
Yep. Okay, so that was one other item. At this time, we'll get to our item number eight, discussion of possible hearings, appeal of a hearings officer approval. Thank you for joining us. We were just rolling this morning, so.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. For the record, Peter Gatawski, Community Development Director, it's my pleasure to introduce you over Zoom. Senior Planner Angie Brewer, who comes from Wasco County as their planning director. She's been with us for several months, and of course, what do we do when you have such a dynamic, intelligent planning professional? We assign her the Thornburg case file. So I will turn it over to her. She is, has a, a young son who's dealing, I think, with the flu right now. So she's doing double duty as a planning professional and as a supermom. So with that, I'll, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I'll turn you over to Angie, who will discuss the current Luba remand and the appeal of the hearings officer's decision to you.
Angie, thank you very much for joining us, and nice to meet you, and I look forward to working with you for many years.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I appreciate the, the really nice introduction, Peter. Thank you. And good morning, commissioners. It's really nice to interview you for the first time. As Peter shared, I'm joining Wasco County and attempting to get up to speed on our work for Destination Resort. Most of the notes for this morning, I might very well be doing that because I want to make sure I get it right. It's a complicated case. It's got a lot of history, as you all know, and the last thing I want to do is misinform or misspeak. So apologies in advance, and thank you, Peter, for acknowledging my son is here with me. Apologies if he makes an unexpected appearance, four-year-olds. So I'm here this morning with Will Groves. Will Groves, if he's not there in person yet, he, he will likely be showing up soon.
He is in the room, and he's provided us a set of slides, so he is with us.
Great, great, thank you. And if it's okay, I need to share my screen. Let me see if I can do that well here. Do you see my cover slide?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, perfect. So as noted previously, we are here to share with you an opportunity to discuss and determine whether or not to hear a recent appeal for a hearings officer decision on remand related to the Thornburg Destination Resort. A publicly accessible website was created for today's presentation and made available seven days prior, and today's memo and draft orders to accept or reject that opportunity are attached to that website. And this PowerPoint that I'm sharing with you, I believe Will will have physical copies for you if you'd like it, and can certainly make it available. But we thought it would be good to provide a visual aid, particularly because this case is so complicated, and there's a bit of a history to just make sure we're all generally aware of. This has been ongoing for more than 15 years, and the details are either fuzzy for some or brand-new to others, and I think it's just wise perhaps for us to talk about the big picture first before we get into the details. So today, in the next 15 minutes or so, I plan to give you a very high-level summary of the resort and permitting history, a very quick summary of the appeal, and our staff recommendation, and allow you some time to discuss and deliberate and direct staff as to how to proceed. So first and foremost, what is a Thornburg Destination Resort and where is it? It is a destination resort by definition under statute. It's on a property that's approximately 2,000 acres, a little bit shy of that, and it's located west and southwest of the Eagle Crest Resort in the city of Redmond. It's important to note that a final master plan has been approved for the resort itself, and we'll talk some more about that, but that plan includes two villages to be constructed in phases, with over 1,000 proposed residences, overnight lodging, and golf courses and associated utilities and amenities.
Actually, I thought it was 950 homes. Did it, Nick, did it change to 1,000? Or Peter?
I just. There's a, so I don't mean to jump in. I can't see everyone's faces, but there are quite a few combinations of different types of homes, and so there's 950 lots, proposed residential lots.
Thank you.
Quite a few combinations of residences and lodging units. Peter, did I capture that okay? Can you think of anything?
No.
Close to that effect?
Yes, thank you, Angie, for that clarification. I think that's what Commissioner Adair was looking for.
Okay, thank you. And thank you for the question, Commissioner. All right, so just a brief timeline. Like I noted before, the application's been in process for more than 15 years now, so the application was originally received in 2005. Conceptual master plan was approved locally in 2006 and affirmed by Luba in the Court of Appeals in 2008. Then fast forward to the final master plan, it was approved and amended locally in 2008, but hung up in litigation until recently, where it was affirmed by Luba in 2018. So that's one of the big reasons for the lapse in time between the beginning of this process and where we are today. After the Luba decision, applications started coming in for development to implement that final master plan through subsequent applications for the subdivisions, the utilities, and the physical structures themselves. So what you're hearing about today has to do with this 2018 moment here, if you will. It's got a long, complicated history of appeals and proposals and revisions, and we'll get into that a little bit more here shortly, but this is the one that has been appealed to you all. And then the golf course, the golf course in Lakes was recently affirmed by Luba in the Court of Appeals in 2019. And I think one of the important points to just underscore here is that any proposals that are now approved, that you're seeing in this list or anything we refer to later, just know that they have been heard and affirmed by multiple hearings bodies, and so the issues that are on, the issues that are at hand today are rather limited in scope and how we are able to address them. And I do have another slide here that specifically, just make sure it's on your radar, we have other active Thornburg applications, first site plan review of overnight lodging units, modifications to the master plan that address the overnight lodging units, and that is in particular, that is specifically related to the ratios of overnight lodging units to single-family dwellings because there have been changes to state and local laws since the original approval. Both of those have been appealed to a hearings officer, and we'll be hearing them on November 4. Let's see, the tentative plan for Phase 2, which is a subdivision for residential lots, has been issued administratively and appealed to a hearings officer very recently, and we've not yet set that date that we will. And the new list file that we are working through is a site plan review for the Welcome Center, golf course, clubhouse, and community hall. It's part of the Phase A1 subdivision. That decision's not yet been issued, but it's in progress, and anticipate it will be going out soon. So the item on appeal today has to do with the Phase A1 proposal, the residential subdivision, which is the TP file referenced in the staff report, and the site plan review, which is the SP file for the associated utility facilities, that's water, wastewater, roads, et cetera, contained within the resort. It's got a long history of approvals, appeals, and remands. It's been active since 2018, and been through a series of hearings bodies and backed around the horn, if you will. Most recently, remanded at a hearings officer from Luba with specific focus and attention on what's referred to as Condition 17. And that file is when, it's 731A, we sort of call it, lovingly refer to it as 731A, but that was this year. So Luba remanded this prior decision specifically over Condition 17, which refers to the water source and availability for wildlife mitigation plans required by the final master plan. Luba was concerned that the prior approval was not as clear as it could have been, and so it required the hearings officer specifically, I'm going to read this so I can make sure I'm accurate here, required the hearings officer to specifically determine whether the approval at hand worked without Condition 17, and if an acceptable alternative source was a substantial change to that master plan. So on remand, the applicant proposed a solution to the hearings officer for the hearings officer's consideration, which was to rely solely on the Big Falls water, I always say it wrong, Big Falls Ranch Water, I was flipping those for some reason, for mitigation, and include no alternative sources. And by doing that, removing Condition 17. The hearings officer's decision liked that proposal. They affirmed that decision and agreed that Condition 17 could be removed if the application was relying solely on that original water source as identified in the final master plan. It found, it also found that the Big Falls Ranch Water conforms with the mitigation plan and meets all of the applicable standards. The hearings officer also addressed a couple of procedural issues raised by the opponent and discussed, I think it's 18 total topics, various issues that came up during the remand process, who generally addresses them with comments. And those are, there's a bit of variety there. Some of it has to do with a lot of record status, some of it has to do with water rights and water availability, drought conditions, overnight lodging units, and a few others. The opponent provided an appeal to the board citing concerns with the procedure, first and foremost, disagrees with the response of the denial of the hearings officer, and asserts that statute entitles them to be able to add information to the record after the record period had closed and respond to information on the record after the record had closed. The hearings officer does address this in his decision, but the opponent disagrees with that conclusion. The opponent also asserts that it's not possible for the hearings officer to reach the conclusion he's reached without that information. The hearings officer addressed that in his decision as well. They generally disagree with the outcome. They believe that Condition 17 should remain or be replaced with a condition that otherwise satisfies the original intent of that wildlife mitigation plan. And just overall, generally, the opponent disagrees with the conclusions for all 18 items that were the miscellaneous issues raised during the remand process. So the board's options here, hopefully fairly straightforward for you all, you have the option to hear the appeal or reject, hearing the appeal, decline the appeal. We want to make sure you're fully aware that the timelines are especially constrained on a Luba remand. We have less time than we typically do to issue a final local decision, and we anticipate that this will be heading to Luba no matter what, just given the case history and the complicated nature of this particular case. So given the timeline constraints on the case history, staff's recommending that board send this record to Luba, and there's a draft order to that effect. I believe it's order 2021-059 for your signature, if that's the path you choose. With that, I think that concludes my presentation. I don't know if Will or Peter have anything they'd like to add. I can pause briefly. If they don't, then I think we can turn it over to Commissioners for questions and deliberation.
So thought real quick, so condition number 17, what's, so I want to make sure I'm using the right terminology. What document is that in? You know, so when we say, I'll give this Condition 17, so I just want to refer to it correctly right now.
Condition 17 is in the, is in the 2018, let me get, is in the 2018, it's in the, well, first and foremost, it's required by the final master plan, but it is included in the 2018 TP and SP plans as a condition in those documents. And let me get to my other screen here, get to my memo.
Is it the final master? I'm just trying to refer to the right document. So it's the final master plan?
Yeah.
Angie, if you don't mind me jumping in here, so.
No, please, go on.
So at issue here is the first phase of the subdivision, and that first phase of subdivision has bounced back and forth to Luba a couple times now. And on one of those visits, the applicant said, in the initial, in the initial proposal, the applicant said, we're going to get water from two places, Big Falls Ranch, Central Oregon Irrigation District. On one of the bounces back, the opponent said, look, it's not clear you can actually get that water. And the hearings officer said, I want to provide you some flexibility there. So if you want to get from Big Falls Ranch, if you want to get from Central Oregon Irrigation District, that's okay. If you want to get it from some other source, that could be okay too. And when that went to Luba, Luba said, look, you can't be adding these other sources of water as a condition of approval at the last minute. You need to really vet that properly. And so when that bounced back to the hearings officer this time, the applicant said, look, we don't need that flexibility that was previously discussed. We don't need other sources. We have the Big Falls Ranch water. We're ready to go with it. And so we can pull Condition 17 out. We don't need that flexibility. And so it is a condition of the Phase 1 tentative plan.
So the Phase 1 tentative plan is where that is.
And Mr. Chairman, just to the core of your question, it originated in the final condition with the final master plan, and then it was a condition for the original approval, which of course has been contested in 2018 as part of the tentative plan. So that's what's on revisitation.
Well, I'm just acknowledging that, yeah, so by removing that condition, it makes the path narrower, and it's that one source, but if, and as I say, the water has always been this issue that isn't land use, but it needs to be there. So as I say, I've been through this a few times. If it doesn't happen, it's a hard stop. So either that water's going to be there or not, so, you know, I mean, I do conclude that the hearings officer is a reasoned opinion at this time. So I'm just trying to get some direction to it.
I'm still trying to understand the dispute at hand and how it relates to the Fish and Wildlife mitigation requirement, the Fish and Wildlife mitigation plan. If I'm understanding correctly, what's in dispute here is not, we're not talking about rolling back the Fish and Wildlife mitigation plan or undoing that. We are talking about whether the applicant has met, you know, met their requirements under that plan, and the requirements have evolved a little bit over time. It, you know, became more flexible, you know, allowing kind of multiple potential sources, and then, and now it's become less flexible. Is that accurate?
Yes, you're tracking correctly. And so, and just to be clear, there's been a lot of public interest about groundwater in the resort generally. And this remand is really focused on, there was water through agreements with the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife and other resource agencies, the water of a certain timing and temperature was going to put in the river to offset some of these resort impacts. And there have been persistent arguments throughout the, throughout the application process about the availability of that water. You'll see, you know, as you look in the record, that opponents are concerned that that water isn't really available, or, you know, I think that they would characterize that there's some sort of shell game going on in terms of the availability of that water. And the hearings officer found that the applicant had, you know, for the purposes of this decision, had proved that that water was available, and that it had already been determined that this Big Falls Ranch water source was sufficient to meet all their habitat mitigation obligations under the existing plan. So specifically what's happening here is that modularity or flexibility to use other sources is being removed because the applicant doesn't need it, and to add those other sources would require significant additional analysis.
And Commissioner Chang, I think it's important to highlight one of the slides that Angie Brewer noted is, there's, as Will noted, there is tremendous interest in this destination resort. It is not without its controversy. It was first applied in 2005 for a conceptual master plan. It took the applicant four years to work its way up to the courts, back down again, up to the courts, back down again, to get a conceptual master plan approval. That occurred in 2009. The final master plan was initiated in 2008, and it took a decade to go through the legal system several times. And what do I mean by that? The Landes Board of Appeals, the Oregon Court of Appeals, the Oregon Supreme Court, the previous board accounting commissioners weighed in on those various master plans, and ultimately in 2018, the Oregon Supreme Court declined to hear an approval by the Landes Board of Appeals that was also affirmed by the Oregon Court of Appeals. So I say that just in, for those that are listening online or watching remotely, that this resort has been, you know, what are we looking at, 16 years in the making, and the wildlife mitigation plan that you made reference to, Commissioner Chang, was litigated extensively in both the conceptual and final master plans, and ultimately it was found that the no-net-loss standard, which is in our, for wildlife-related impacts, was met. So it's not to diminish the complexity or the controversy, it's more just to say that this resort has thoroughly been vetted, both at the local and in the Oregon courts.
Yeah, and I know, you know, coming on the, coming on the heels of a horrible drought summer, there's tremendous concern about water resources in our community, and I know there has been a tremendous amount of interest in this project as a, you know, kind of flowing from that or stemming from that, but it is, you know, to anyone who's watching and who's tracking, it's very important to understand that this appeal is not a pathway to undo the, undo the approval of the final master plan. This appeal is not a pathway to undo the approval of the Fish and Wildlife mitigation plan. What was, what is in dispute here is whether the conditions of that Fish and Wildlife mitigation plan have been met, and if they have not been met, then it doesn't preclude the applicant from coming back with, you know, other mitigation water at some point in the future to try to proceed with their project. So, you know, I just wanted to emphasize to, you know, again, anyone who's watching that, that this is, you know, where this fits in the grand scheme of, you know, water, you know, water issues in the Deschutes Basin. And with that, I would say that the questions that are being, you know, wrangled over, disputed in this appeal are really questions of state law. We're not, this is not like a local county code that we are trying to interpret that we are responsible for, you know, the county commission is responsible for, for a county code. You know, the questions at hand in this appeal. You know, the, the questions at hand in this appeal are questions of state law, and, uh, in, in my opinion, you know, after the, after the hearings officer has gone through this very, um, um, you know, diligent, thorough process to, to issue a, a decision, um, I don't, I don't see a role for the county, uh, board of commissioners to reconsider that. I think if, um, the, these parties want to continue to, um, wrangle over, you know, the questions at hand in this appeal, that those would be better pursued at, uh, the state level.
So, Peter, I do have a question. Because of the sixteen years that have passed since the original application in two thousand and five, if someone put in the same application today, would it have any merit? Um, are we over the population thresholders for this type of an application?
Commissioner Dare, it's a, it's a very poignant question. Uh, I can tell you that that very question about whether or not a, a new resort remains eligible in Deschutes County is currently being litigated. Uh, the Land use Board of Appeals, in, in a decision this year, I want to say, or might have been late last year, found that the destination resort maps, which deter, which the county has adopted in its comprehensive plan, and in a combining zone, the Land use Board of Appeals found that that map, um, is a point in time. And so, uh, to the extent that Bend hits, uh, has hit a hundred thousand people, which is a criterion under state law for determining, uh, an eligibility map, the Land use Board of Appeals founds that, found that because Deschutes County's map were acknowledged and produced prior to when Bend reached a hundred thousand residents, and the twenty-four aramile prohibition, that that, that those maps still, uh, designate eligible properties going forward. The Oregon Court of Appeal, Appeals affirmed without opinion, and, uh, it's my understanding that, uh, a number of issues, this is associated with some golf courses and, uh, some, some ponds and some utility facilities associated with Thornburg, that that decision by the Court of Appeals has now been appealed to the Oregon Supreme Court. So, we will know definitively, uh, in two thousand twenty-two whether or not Luba's decision ultimately is affirmed, and, and that will then, uh, answer your question in a dispositive manner.
Thank you, Peter. Thanks for that, because I, I, I know people are really concerned with our water, um, issues, the usage, et cetera, and yet, this property, you know, has been fighting for sixteen years, and the fact that we could perhaps even have more, and we'll know next year in twenty-two then, from the Supreme Court decision?
We'll know whether or not those lands that are eligible remain eligible. There's still a, an extensive process. Just because you have land that's eligible for a destination resort does not automatically make it a destination resort, as, as the Thornburg Resort Experience demonstrates. There's a lot of requirements that, that come into play. One has to receive conceptual and final master plan approval, and, and, and then at that point in time, one can, as a developer, can come forward with actually, uh, land use applications to build the resort. So, it is a complicated, controversial, and what we're seeing is a very expensive endeavor just to get to the entitlement phase. So, I wouldn't want anybody listening at home or watching the video to somehow think Deschutes County is going to continue to, to birth more destination resorts. We don't know, uh, but we still have an eligibility map that shows lands that if there was the right investment, as of today, they could, uh, apply for, for a resort and go through the same process that the other four have successfully achieved and what Thornburg is currently pursuing.
Listeners, if I may, uh, not to disagree with Peter, but to provide a little bit more clarity on that issue.
Sure, please join us.
Uh, Adam Smith, Assistant Legal Counsel. Uh, so the opponents, uh, have indicated, uh, that they are considering an appeal to the Oregon Supreme Court. To date, no appeal has been filed. Uh, so, first, they would have to decide to go forward with an appeal to the Oregon Supreme Court, and second, it's unclear if this, uh, the issue that Peter just briefed you on would be one of their assignments of error. There are a number of other things that they could decide to appeal to the Oregon Supreme Court. And then, the, the last point, differing from the Court of Appeals or Luba, which have to hear and issue decisions on any appeal that is, uh, taken before those appellate bodies, uh, the Oregon Supreme Court functions differently, and just because an appeal's filed doesn't mean that the, the court will take up the case. Uh, it usually takes a few months for them to decide if they are or are not going to hear an appeal, uh, but just because an appeal's filed doesn't mean that they will hear the case and issue a decision on, on the matter at all. More likely, or at least by the numbers, more, more times than not, the Oregon Supreme Court decides not to hear a matter. So, it is, uh, still an open question, but, uh, I would say, uh, it's a, uh, closer to being resolved than not.
Another clarification question on that, um, or kind of playing things out into the future. So, um, Peter, you mentioned that, you know, the destination resort maps that came with our, our most recent comprehensive plan, um, are, are, you know, what's being debated right now, you know, whether, whether those are still valid, uh, going forward or, or not. We are about to embark on a comprehensive plan update. Is there, um, i, are, is a destination resort, uh, map a, a component of that comprehensive plan update? Uh, and if so, I, I, from the point that we complete that comprehensive plan update, you know, any applications, um, going forward would have, you know, any new applications would have to be, um, uh, you know, compliant with that map moving forward. Is that, is that correct?
Commissioner Chang, it's correct on, on both accounts. The, the, uh, destination resort designation is a element of our comprehensive plan, and we codify that in a destination resort combining zone or an overlay zone to show which properties from remain, or are eligible for a, a goal eight destination resort. So, through the comprehensive plan update process, I, I, I think we will likely receive input about rural development and resort development, and we welcome those perspectives. And, and, and to the extent that there's, you know, I, I will collect those comments, it may inform, you know, how goals and policies are drafted to position the comprehensive plan to address growth and development out to beyond two thousand forty. And, uh, then we would look to the board of county commissioners to determine, you know, at some later stage, how that affects the existing destination resort map.
Okay. Thank you.
So, Commissioner Dare, uh, do you have clarity on this matter? I'm just-
Uh, yes, I, I do believe that we should, um, not hear it.
Okay, yeah.
And put it, you know, send it on.
Yeah, so is there-
Especially there's a time factor, and it really makes sense.
Sounds like that's where we're going.
So, do we need a motion for that?
Please.
Okay, um, I move approval of signature board order number two thousand twenty-one dash zero five nine, which is declining appeal. Let me make sure I get zero five nine.
Declining to-
I think that's it.
Declining to hear appeal.
Yeah. So, that's a motion, is it her second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Um, it sounds like, uh, as part of the comprehensive plan, there's all kinds of big picture items in there, but for this matter, uh, there's a little bit of clarity. Uh, seeing no other discussion, Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes.
And I want to thank Angie for getting on top of an incredibly complicated sixteen years of, um, Deschutes County history. So, thank you and welcome.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Appreciate the grace while I model, model through some of the details.
It's incredibly complicated.
Welcome.
Okay, all set. At this time, item number nine, COVID nineteen update. About ten minutes before the top of the hour, we were trying to get this in, there's, uh, Dr. Conway can explain, but eleven o'clock today, discussion about vaccines for a new younger age group, I think is the topic. So, this will be our, uh, public health update on topic of COVID nineteen with a Facebook Live feed also at our Zoom meeting.
Thanks, Commissioners, for the record. George Conway, Health Services Director, and, uh, morning, Mr. LeLac, Mr. Doyle. We have a varied presentation this morning. I'll give the sort of background information. I want to point out that, um, Kristin Sully's not available, so Emily Freeland, who's, um, Environmental Health Specialist with a master's degree as well, um, will give, serves as our COVID nineteen response and recovery supervisor, will substitute for Ms. Sully, and then Dr. Michael Johnson from St. Charles will actually follow me with a, an update on the hospital status, and I'm awaiting, waiting his reply. Yeah, okay, I'll, I'll advance all the slides. Um, I also want to acknowledge, um, Jessica Terpstra is out of town, uh, on leave this week and next week, so Sarah Calavoda, who's the Region Seven Epidemiologist for OHA, uh, was kind enough to assist us with the statistical preparation. Next slide, please. So, um, we're, we have a, an improvement over what we were seeing in the latter part of the summer and early fall, but we're really still seeing, uh, roughly one hundred cases per day reported on average. So, it's, it moves around a bit, but that's, that's where we are. It's disappointing and concerning, but not that surprising. Our wastewater signal in Bend and Redmond is still persistently high, uh, as, uh, Dr. Johnson will be describing, the hospital census, uh, still remains quite high. Next slide, please. So, case rates remain highest among young adults. We have had a, um, a marked increase on a percentage basis of, uh, octogenarians as well, reported in that last week. As far as net numbers, not a particularly high number, but as far as percentage, substantial. Next slide, please. Oh, can I advance them?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Great. Well, and if I get stuck, I'll let you know. Okay, um, older age groups are most vulnerable. Um, and you can see there's a very sharp increase once we get into the, uh, the seventies and eighties in, um, deaths. Although, the number of cases, of course, are smaller. Next slide, please. So, age just basically confers vulnerability. Oh, here we go. Okay, so trainable or slow. So, um, vaccination rates vary by age group. The hundred five percent for the people in their seventies is likely an artifact because we have a lot of, people have second homes here who may have elected to get their vaccination, but may not be counted as residents by the U.S. Census. But we have very high, um, substantial vaccination rates for people over sixty, um, satisfactory middle age, and we're still working on, uh, twelve to seventeen. Our case investigation time has improved since the last presentation a couple weeks ago. Uh, we're now investigating eighty-nine percent, uh, within twenty-four hours, and that's, uh, I think largely a function of that we do have slightly lower volume than we had a month or six weeks ago, well, certainly six weeks ago, and that's permitting this, and we appreciate the, the board's assistance with, um, the funds to help us with staff and that. We have, um, ERD and Endeavor to help ensure adequate follow-up to determine one's risk, and because licensed clinical referrals and prescriptions are necessary to receive monoclonal antibody and other effective treatments, our team is reminding persons newly diagnosed with COVID nineteen of their options for follow-up. To see the regular medical provider, if they have one, or primary care provider. If not, to go to immediate or urgent care if they're covered by private insurance or Medicaid. If they, if they don't have insurance and they're, or they're what we call medically antigen, but not covered by those, they can also go to one of the federally qualified health centers, so Mosaic Medical in most of the region, and then LePine Community Health Center for assistance with, um, follow-up and navigation.
So, Dr. Conway, uh, on the title of that slide, what's CI and CT, I guess I-
Oh, contact investigation, contact tracing.
Okay, and then primary care providers.
People and primary care providers.
So, this is follow-up, uh, if you've been diagnosed with COVID nineteen?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
So, our, uh, our testing volume remains relatively stable the last three reporting weeks, and the, uh, testing, um, positivity rate is still quite substantial. It's, uh, twelve percent, and you can see that's a slight increase over the last two weeks, so we're, we're really not out of the woods yet. Our breakthrough cases, these are individuals that have been vaccinated but have, uh, their detectable, um, COVID and may have symptoms, continues to be substantial. Um, not surprising with Delta, this conforms to what's being seen with the Delta variant in other countries and other parts of the United States, but we're, uh, the breakthrough rate is still hovering around thirty percent or the high twenties. This is-
I'm not totally tracking that, that percentage, uh, statistic, so that means thirty percent of all of the cases in the county are breakthrough cases, or that means, uh, something else?
My understanding is it's, it's the thirty percent of all the cases, but I should, I should, two things I'd like to explain. First of all, many of those folks may not be even symptomatic, they may just be detected as a named contact. The other thing is, while we have high, and I think, I think, uh, Dr. Johnson will talk about this, uh, when talking about the hospital data, while we have this, uh, significant percentage of breakthrough cases nationally, and it's been observed internationally, the frequency of those folks requiring hospitalization, uh, becoming seriously ill, and the risk of their dying is, is hugely lower than the unvaccinated.
It was actually twenty point three percent yesterday at St. Charles. They don't have their number out today, but twenty percent, no one in ICU was, um, previously vaccinated, but in, just into the hospital, it was twenty percent. They, they are, um, you know, you can calculate that number on their chart.
Yes, thank you. It does vary, of course, by day, these are weekly statistics, and, uh, I think Dr. Johnson will talk more about that as well.
But again, I mean, if twenty percent of the people in the hospital, and, and those being mildly, the, the more mild cases that are hospitalized, if twenty percent of the people in the hospital are, um, are previously vaccinated people, we're talking about, I, I mean, at this point, we're approaching close to eighty percent of the population of the county is vaccinated. So, if eighty percent of the population is only producing twenty percent of the cases, um, the, the effectiveness of the, uh, the vaccine, it's not bulletproof, but, um, it's still quite high.
Yes, thank you, and I, I would like to point out that the, there's, um, statistically, we would call it skewing, but there's very much a bias to the right as far as age goes for the people that are hospitalized and vaccinated. So, as you become, uh, quite old, then your, the effectiveness of vaccines diminish, and your, your inherent immunity may be somewhat impaired as, especially as you get into the middle of the, uh, your ninth decade, your mid-eighties. So, I think, I think Dr. Johnson will talk a little bit about that distribution as well. So, so the, the take-home message here is that it is possible, if you've been vaccinated, to acquire and potentially transmit COVID, but the likelihood by dint of your having been vaccinated, you're developing serious problems is much lower.
Now, I was told with my mom, who's now ninety-one, because she had COVID in July, she's now in hospice, that if, when she dies within the next, if she dies within the next six months, it will be considered a COVID death. Because she was, that's what the doctor has told my sister. Even though she, you know, had it recovered, basically, um, and is fine, but it will be a COVID death. And, and I just don't understand that, why they're allowing that positive in July to go on for six months. It really doesn't make sense to me.
Surveillance- Surveillance statistics are intended to be standardized in individual instances. They may make less sense than as a population medicine distribution. Thank you. So treatments, and I appreciate your...
Dr. Conway, before we go on from this first section, could I just ask one question about case counts for the county? So that was the very first slide, but you don't have to go back because my question is essentially our, the Delta wave for us is coming down slowly. My impression is that in other, other parts of the state, other counties, the wave is coming down more quickly. And I just, I, we do have very high vaccination rates. And I was wondering if you could just, you know, give some thoughts on why, why we are, why we are not able to contain COVID?
And actually, I'll point out that Commissioner DeBonne passed along an inquiry from a citizen, basically, to that effect. So I did, I did look at this and send a somewhat structured reply about that. I think there's three factors. The principal one is that we're, we have good vaccination rates, not, not the sort of winning top three to five we were in the beginning of the vaccination interval, but we're still in the top quintile. However, if you look at vaccination rates in the adjacent counties, they're much lower. Case rates are much higher in the adjacent counties, particularly Crook is, has very high case rates. And I think Michael Johnson will show quite a bit about that. So the first thing is we have proximity to the higher part of, the higher rate part of the state and the less vaccinated portion of the state. And of course, some of those people, because the large stores in the region and many activities, cultural amenities and whatnot are located in Deschutes County for Central Oregon, there's a lot of people moving in and out, people live in one community, commute to another. So there isn't any way of stopping a high degree of intermixing with the adjacent counties. So, and I didn't, I didn't bring the, there's a good OHA map, there's a map, there's a number of other maps that show the case rates. But if you look at case rates by county, much of, especially northwestern Oregon, is quite cool now, it's decreasing rapidly. But most of eastern Oregon, particularly central, eastern and southeastern Oregon have still very high case rates and very low vaccination rates. And then the other is that I have noticed that the non-pharmaceutical interventions, primarily masks, that have been promoted, there's variable, I guess compliance might be the right word, but if you go into retail establishments, some of them, everybody's wearing a mask. And I've been in others, I was in a grocer not long ago where there were very few people wearing masks other than the people working. So I think the controversy over masking, as with vaccination, is extremely unfortunate. So we lose one other protective measure if people elect not to wear, not to wear masks. Those are, that's the best answer I can provide.
And the third factor I think you had put in the email is around being a hub for tourism and the importation and...
Yeah, yeah, and I was trying to bundle that in a second one, that, right, people coming in and out, that's true. We also have a substantial visitor industry. And I think our rate of visitors per unit population is high, too. And I think that ends up making four, but that's, that's fine.
But you look at the prior summer, and we are like, we were practically flat the prior summer. Okay, I realize it wasn't Delta then, but we had a lot of tourists here in the summer of 2020. And, oh my gosh, yeah, there was, you know, it didn't go up until truly started about the end of October. So, you know, when you look at that and you think, because a lot of activity in the summer is outside.
But the third wave had sort of played...
Commissioner, I think it's fair to acknowledge that we don't necessarily, in the public health community, necessarily have all the answers or understand all the factors involved. I think it's good to be a bit humble about this. I think what Dr. Conway just mentioned is very educated understanding of the transmission and the patterns we're observing. But there are some things going on, and Michael will, I think, attest to this, too, is that we just don't have necessarily good answers for at this point.
Thanks, thanks, Nahad. I think the most important thing is for, since there is an element of individual choice in many of these things, whether you get vaccinated, and also I'll be talking about children in a moment, and then whether or not you wear a mask, there are things you can do to protect yourself, which is to think hard about going ahead and being vaccinated. If you find yourself in a crowded space, you enter a store, an event, which is crowded and there's many people not wearing masks, my advice would be that you leave, go with your feet.
So just as a follow-on, so that, that was a helpful explanation or kind of hypothesizing about why even in a county with high vaccination rates, we're seeing such high cases. The next place I'd go with that is there, there are counties that are having, you know, that are, that are on the taper, that are on, of this curve, and I'm wondering if they're doing things that we're not. So, you know, if, you know, and you may have thoughts on this off the top of your head, or this may be something to explore and kind of bring, bring back to discuss later. But are there, are there COVID containment, COVID response measures being taken in other counties that we can learn from?
I think that the absolute answer to that is probably not, as far as the overall pattern. We meet, we meet every week with OHA, with the administrator, the health administrators for the counties on Friday afternoons. We have frequent interactions with OHA. Otherwise, I'm in bimonthly meetings with the Health Officer Consortium, and we're trading notes constantly. So as far as the basic things we're doing, they're very similar. But there are, once again, regional variations. There are portions of the state where there's been enthusiastic uptake of masking, as I mentioned, but also where there's a more rigorous approach to masking, social distancing, et cetera, in the schools, et cetera. So, so I think as the, I think this is one of those places where the, the cultural milieu is, you could further east and to some extent, south in Oregon, you have a more libertarian ethos and more, you know, that I want to make my own decisions. And while that may be good in general for civil and social liberties, it means that it may be harder to contain a very rapidly moving epidemic.
Looks like Dr. Johnson has a comment.
Please.
Yeah, if, if I'm allowed to share my screen just for a moment, I have three particular slides that might shed some light on this, or at least provide an opinion. And this is with regard to why is Central Oregon recovering at a slower rate than the rest of the state? This has been a perplexing problem that I've been trying to dig into for several weeks now. The screenshot that you're seeing there on this slide is from the OHA website, and you can, the source is down there at the bottom, but you can see that the green line there for the non-metropolitan counties is, is quite a bit higher than the others with regard to the total deaths per 100,000 people. And you can see that it got much, much steeper about when the Delta variant hit. The blue line in the middle is all counties within Oregon, and the purple line at the bottom is the metropolitan counties. So it, the Delta variant is worse in the non-metro areas. It's, it's also dramatically different for those areas that have a proportion of their population over 65. And that's this line on the top. And when you look at these things in combination, that is, you're kind of describing the eastern side of Oregon, non-metropolitan, and we do have a higher proportion of our, or all of our counties surrounding us, not particularly Deschutes County, but all of them have older age groups. There is one other indicator here, and I'm not sure if you're familiar with the Social Vulnerability Index, there's a link at the bottom here, but I know that these things are interrelated, you know, age and metropolitan and social economic status and some other things. However, this particular thing shows the same story, that if you have high vulnerability and counties that are completely surrounding Deschutes County do have a higher vulnerability index, the Delta variant has been, you know, incredibly impactful. So I'm not saying that this explains it entirely, but I do know that the regions that are along the western side of the state are very different demographically than those on the eastern side. And before we've been able to, if you will, dodge the bullet with the previous variants, the Delta variant is so incredibly transmissible, we have not been able to dodge this bullet, and it's catching up. So despite Deschutes County having a pretty good vaccination rate, we are, you know, the entire eastern side of the state is impacting kind of our lives.
Thanks very much. I think if it's the same SBI that the federal government uses, I think that includes measures like poverty. And there's also, one of the measures is distance from definitive medical care. So as you get to more rural places throughout the United States, there's been a hollowing out of the workforce, so you tend to have an older population, including even among farmers and ranchers, and you're much further from definitive medical care in addition to that rural poverty is a reality in a lot of places. Are those, do you know, are those inputs for, are those major inputs for the SBI that you were applying?
Yeah, there's, there's like four different areas, and it's, if you haven't looked at that, I would really encourage you to go check that out because it is quite telling of much of the characteristics of, of our region and, and why some of these things have occurred. It has to do with transportation, it has to do with socioeconomic indicators, like you had mentioned. It also talks about educational levels, single-family homes, bunch of other things.
The, this is a sort of a digression, but one of the realities in, in public health is, and the COHC and other, other organizations, including OHA, have been thematically emphasizing social determinants of health. And this is one of those areas where you have a tremendous interaction between those underlying social determinants like the SBI represents and the susceptibility that one's community and one's area has to things like pandemics. And the difficulty of mounting effective responses is compounded in places where you have less infrastructure, less transportation, a thinner population, and an older population that may have more inherent need for services. So, so thanks very much, Michael. That, I think, helps sort of unpack, unpack the difficulties. So I think those social determinants, the non-pharmaceutical, pharmaceutical interventions being less frequently is, all are factors that we, that we, I suppose, endure, given our location.
Thank you.
Dr. Conway, wasn't your BMI really, really, like, over 50% of the people that were dying of COVID had a very high BMI? I mean, isn't our country, the obesity ranking just going up? I mean, it's really a problem. And I, you know, I saw someone the other day who didn't, wasn't vaccinated, but clearly should have lost like 50 pounds or something. They survived COVID, but isn't that really, truly one of the major factors?
Sure, sure. And there's a very strong correlation between obesity and BMI and lower socioeconomic status, whether it's marked by education or others. And there's also a correlation between some race and ethnicities that suffer lower SES also having higher proclivity for obesity and concurrent diseases that occur with obesity, such as diabetes mellitus and hypertension. So, yeah, it's, it's, it's another marker. And curiously, many, many rural areas...
But there is...
Are sort of, excuse me, are food deserts as well. So unless you have your own garden, it's often hard to get things like fresh fruit and produce. So there's some programs that are trying to increase that, like the additional SNAP programs. Yes, Michael?
I just want to add in, I, I looked in gory detail at the list of comorbidities that are associated with, when a patient comes into the hospital, is COVID, and certainly obesity is, is one of them. But when we compare the population of an average patient who comes into the hospital, because that's the data I have, very accessible, and a COVID patient that comes into the hospital, the COVID patients have about the same number of comorbidities as a normal patient in the hospital. I mean, it's not like only the obese are getting, you know, hospitalized because of COVID. They have about the same obesity rate as an average person that comes into the hospital. Same with almost every other comorbidity that's listed. So it's, yes, they do have a lot of comorbidities, but so do all of our patients. To be honest with you, so do a lot of people that are walking up and down the street, like you mentioned. If you have an obesity rate of 45%, and you have a smoking rate of X number of percent, and you have certain people who are cancer survivors, and even if you've, you know, if you're pregnant, or, I mean, this takes a big proportion of the population. And so I really want to make sure that we aren't discounting COVID only, that it attacks the weak and the feeble. They kind of look like the rest of us.
Well, I think that the central demographic feature of people that are hospitalized is age, and comorbidities accumulate with age. So I think it's, it's hard to unpack this, but that's one of the reasons...
Absolutely.
...why, in addition to having had authorization to give additional doses, not called boosters, of vaccine to individuals that had any, any severe, what we're calling comorbidities, other underlying illnesses, now we're also authorized to give booster doses to people that are in their 60s and beyond and, and also people that are exposed occupationally. So I think there's, there's a real sensibility about this. But I guess it is, it is important that we not focus on just one of those and sort of either overly judge individuals that may be obese and have COVID, or to assume that if you're thin and fat, that you're entirely immune to, to this illness. Or young, for that matter. So is it okay if we go back to, to finish the little bit I have before the rest of yours, Michael?
Yes.
So per Commissioner Derris' frequent reminders, I wanted to talk a little bit about treatments and since I talked about referral for, to primary care and navigating that.
Yes, please. I thank you so much for doing that. I think it is really important. As I noted, we lost a couple of people in LePine, and I really, and I've heard, heard from people in the community that, what are we saying? What do people need to do? And I know it's extremely specific, you know, C, D, it's, but it's very specific per my, our intern. They give us clear direction on what products we should be taking in order to stay, you know, survive COVID.
So as far as, if you will, pre-hospital or to try to keep one out of the hospital, we have a quite limited menu of measures that can be taken right now. First and foremost is vaccine, but as far as therapeutics go, just a very brief summary of the distinction between antibody, monoclonal antibody therapy, which is our main tool in reducing the risk of people becoming seriously ill, especially if they have a high-risk profile. So antibodies are inherent tools that our body uses to defend itself from known foreign material, especially protein. The antibody therapy basically exploits that by producing synthetically large quantities of that similar antibody, and that would bind to the virus and gum it up so it can't, it can't further infect you. A vaccine is more of a device to train our bodies to be able to fight that battle itself. Antibody therapy treat, is used to treat those people that have already been infected with COVID-19 virus in this instance, whereas the vaccine, once again, trains to... with COVID-19 virus in this instance, whereas the vaccine, once again, trains to, to fight that on occasion. Antibody therapy will start taking effect very, very rapidly after it's given, and it will immediately start to sequester those, uh, those virus particles. Whereas vaccines, there's a latency where your body has to start developing its immunity after the stimulus of, of a vaccine. Antibody therapy can last in your, in your bloodstream for a period of weeks to months until, until the excess, um, antibody is, is, is excreted or tied up. Uh, vaccines typically last for years.
And Dr. Conway, before we leave this slide, I just, um, if we can go back, um, I, I very much appreciate that the value of, um, educating people about, uh, the, the effectiveness of anti, of, uh, therapies, um, and the importance of that. Um, but I, I do, the, the way that this, this slide is set up, I, I want to, I, I want to just make very, very sure that people are not getting the impression that this is, this is their choice, that they either get vaccinated, or they just wait till they get COVID and they can get antibody treatment. I, that, that, uh, we really are promoting vaccination as, uh, the, the, the best way to prevent COVID infection, and then, uh, if you happen to get COVID, uh, that's when the, the therapeutics come in.
I, I wholeheartedly agree. This, this arm, this port, part of our presentation is about managing COVID once you have it. The best thing to do is, A, not get it, and B, if you were to get it, you're much better off if you've been vaccinated. Um, as I'll, as I'll mention in the next slide, the, the focus in this, this therapy, well, actually not the next slide, but the one after, this just, uh, talks about, uh, monoclonal antibodies, and that they basically cover or sequester the virus. But this, this slide, um, talks about the recommendations for post-exposure prophylaxis. So this, these tools aren't completely reserved, but they're primarily for people that have a high-risk profile already. So those people with comorbidities, underlying illnesses, or very elderly that are particularly at risk, and that's why we mentioned that it's important when people get a diagnosis of COVID, that they have their primary care provider help assess their risk, assess the degree of any symptoms they might be having to make an appropriate referral, because these need to be given relatively quickly. So this is our, this is just the treatment arm of the strategy. As far as public health goes, the leading thing right now would be vaccines, but also non-pharmaceutical interventions like masking and distancing. And then this is more what happens and is needed if, if one becomes infected. Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you.
So, um, this is just, I'll try not to go into this level of detail, but if you have the two, two M A B or monoclonal antibody therapy, combined therapy, uh, which are available now, um, not in large quantity, and that's one of the reasons why we're still doing, uh, risk-based screening for the, for their administration, uh, can be given both by infusion, which is an IV, IV, and typically in an infusion environment, so a room often in a hospital or a large clinic. But they're also authorized, as of, oh, six or eight weeks ago, I think it's more, maybe even three months ago now, for subcutaneous, uh, or where you'd have an injection in each limb, and that can be done as an outpatient. But the indications for that are people that are not fully vaccinated, or fully vaccinated but not expected to mount an adequate immune response. So that can include people with immunocompromising conditions, those taking immunosuppressive medications, and, and the very old that are already frail and suffering other problems. Plus, exposure history to SARS-CoV-2. So had, either had a recent exposure to an individual with, um, cars, uh, SARS-CoV-2 infection that's consistent with CDC's close contact criteria, or at high risk of, of exposure to an individual because of recent occurrence. So this is in the general category that we call post-exposure prophylaxis. So is this, it, you don't necessarily have to be, uh, COVID-infected demonstrably at the time. If you're very high risk and you've had a high-risk exposure, let's say that your, your spouse that you've been caring for, for months is diagnosed with COVID, and you, you're tested right after that, and you, you haven't converted, uh, you would still be eligible for this if you have any of these other, other underlying tendencies.
Dr. Conway, when did we first start, uh, vaccinating in Deschutes County? Was it in December? Did we have vaccines then?
Yes.
Okay.
I know, because I was one of the vaccinators, and I also did receive a, a vaccine, uh, at the very end of December.
Thank you.
So, uh, timing and doses of this, uh, combination therapy of, of, uh, monoclonal antibodies should be administered, and that's the reason why we do it, even if you're at high risk and you have a known exposure, but you're not yet demonstrably infected, should be done within seven days so that as the, um, virus is starting to reproduce rapidly in your body, you're trying to sequester those, those viruses so that they don't get out of hand. Uh, and it can either be given, as I mentioned, uh, in each limb, subcutaneously, a relatively shallow injection, uh, or as a single IV infusion. And, uh, people should be watched for an hour after this, because this is a, this is substantial dosage of medicine in either case. Um, and then the, the recommendation panel within FDA, um, hasn't, um, decided whether giving a repeat dosing, um, every four weeks, uh, of P E P would be warranted, and part of that, once again, is that we don't have a, a robust supply of these. So, um, one other thing before we go into the hospitalization, um, information, and that is, um, how protective is natural immunity, which is a, a question that's very, very frequently asked, is implicit in a number of the questions that we've had. There's a recent study, there's actually a number of them, but this is maybe the most accessible in its, um, results. Um, Iran had a, a, the real challenge in starting to vaccinate its population, and into July, I think the entire nation of Iran, uh, had a vaccination rate only about 3%. They've sensed that, and they've really ramped it up. In, in places like that, Iran, and then such as India, where we had, uh, hundreds of millions of people that were unvaccinated when the Delta variant arrived, we have things that researchers and epidemiologists call natural experiments. A natural experiment is when something, something very bad happens, unimpeded for a while by human effort. So, um, there's a team at Oxford University, which is headed by a, a, an Iranian physician, Mohan Ghaffari, and, um, they've done a very interesting analysis looking at, there's, there's not very good, um, case detection, or there hasn't been very good ta- case detection in many, uh, many nations, including Iran. So what they've done is they've gone back, very similar to what was done in India, um, after their COVID, their COVID disaster, which extended basically from February, March through May of this last year, which was fueled by, by the Delta. They've gone back and they've looked for excess deaths, because the, the surveillance system specifically for COVID has not been very strong. And what they did with that is they reconstructed the trajectory of the epidemic, uh, of COVID in Iran during the time that there was a low vaccination rate. So the inception, from the inception or the detection of the, the pandemic in early February of 2020 through this last summer. What they found, this is, I'm sorry, this is kind of a complicated language, but the significant heterogeneity in estimated attack rates means that there were very big differences between different provinces. Highly urbanized provinces around Tehran and Qom and other developed, developed areas had lower excess undetected mortality than the more rural provinces. And what that, um, in, they found, uh, in 11 provinces that had close to or higher than 100% attack rates, imputing this from the mortality. So what that means is that the average person was infected, and some people were infected more than once. In the most extreme example, Sistan and Baluchistan, which is the, the province at the far southeast of Iran and touches the western, the western, uh, part of Pakistan, which is also called Baluchistan Province in, in Pakistan, and southwestern Afghanistan. So this is a rural area with very little infrastructure. One individual may have been exposed to the disease more than once, and in that province they found a 254% imputed exposure. So the average person, on a population basis, had been infected two and a half times with COVID. So this calls into question the idea of durable, durable natural immunity, which we know wanes, and durable herd immunity. And this is, it's a very important input in our understanding of disease, because we can't treat everyone that's had COVID as durably immune. If you had COVID a year ago, January or February in the initial waves, you're now more than 18 months out. You may have very little natural immunity. So despite several waves of infection and high attack rates, um, uh, herd immunity through natural infection did not appear to be an effective, um, resp, uh, mitigating factor. So-
So just like we were, just like we were looking at our breakthrough cases and saying, and saying vaccination is not bulletproof, al- also, um, having been infected once does not, is not bulletproof against getting COVID again.
Right. And then if you look at that, I don't want to, this is a very complicated paper with a lot of mathematical modeling, but if you look at it, what happened was, uh, with the introduction of Delta, this really took off a lot of rural, rural areas in Iran. But this is in keeping with many other places, much of South Asia, uh, it hasn't ripped through Bangladesh, it's quite a high rate as India, but they've had very high rates in Bangladesh as well. India is estimated to have suffered as many as three and a half million additional deaths than, than the deaths reported specifically for COVID, using the same kind of methodology. So there's a couple of points here. One of them is that this is clearly not a, a trivial disease, which I think we're all sensing already, but the other is that even though there may be some natural immunity acquired, now that we have these excellent tools as far as vaccines, we need to augment that, and that's the point of this next slide. This is sort of an interesting botanical illustration of hybrid vigor immunity, and it's, it's probably hard to read this level of detail in this slide, but each of the, the blue leaves that are, or, or branches that are highlighted here include, um, memory B cells, those are the ones that our body learns to produce antibody through, antibodies themselves, C D, uh, four T cells, also known as killer T cells, those are, those are cytotoxic cells that can actually attack foreign, foreign organisms, including viruses. And then C D eight T cells, and those actually mediate the, the, the deployment of cells throughout the body to protect, to protect us. So you see the smallest tree is natural immunity, that if you've been exposed to a disease, you will acquire these things if you have any intact immunity at all, but it's not very strong and it's not very durable. Vaccine immunity, a- as far as just by itself, confers, uh, a higher degree and more durable immunity through each of those mechanisms. But if you've been infected, and then you get vaccinated, you actually have what we call hybrid immunity, and so basically that's additive, so, or even synergistic, so that if you've been infected, it's very prudent, typically waiting at least 90 days post, post your illness, but it's prudent, your infection rather, it's prudent to get vaccinated as well, uh, even if you've had COVID. Sorry if that was slightly a long-winded way of explaining this. Um, moving along, COVID vaccines are, are safe. We know that especially the mRNA vaccines have a very high effectiveness and a very strong safety profile. There are, we're giving these to millions and millions of people. There are some, some, uh, side effects that are, are noteworthy. Uh, they vary by person, and there are some, uh, complications, but they're rare, and they're much rarer than the risk of serious illness and death from the, from the virus itself, which is the basic calculus used in deciding whether or not to give vaccines. That's interesting. Well, this is a slide about vaccinating adolescents. I'm not sure what happened to it. Um, it's just a reminder that the adolescents benefit highly, the 12th, 18th, by being vaccinated, and they have a 93% reduc- reduction in hospitalization. This slide, the demographic, uh, trends of COVID-19 cases, and actually, I'll point out that, uh, Dr. Johnson and I spontaneously, uh, were, were looking at this, and, uh, this is sort of a hybrid of, of what we had dug up. This is a reminder that the distribution of, uh, COVID cases per hundred thousand in the United States is most highly concentrated as far as cases go in, uh, young adults and older teens. However, there's still a very significant number of, uh, school-aged children that do become afflicted of, with this. So particularly that, that new vaccine age that we're about to, uh, embark on with new vaccines from five to 11, we have about s- almost 7% of cases in the United States have been in that age group. So this is not a, not a trivial, trivial exposure for those school-aged children. Of course, they're, you know, mixing, mixing in class, they may also have, uh, people that are medically frail at home. So, uh, vaccines for children, um, ages five to 11, and I'm sorry, that artifact with the 11 wrapped around. Anyhow, the FDA Advisory Committee, uh, yesterday endorsed the Pfizer vaccine as a two-dose series, three weeks apart, for children five, uh, five to 11 years of age. The Centers for Disease Control is, uh, contemplating this now. Uh, they'll convene, I think they'll convene an advisory committee ASAP, uh, very, very soon, and hopefully CDC will give it a blessing as well. Moderna is just behind Pfizer in this process. They've submitted information to, to, um, the FDA. Uh, it's, curiously, it's for six, six to 11-year-olds, I'm not quite sure why. This is a slightly smaller dose, it's about one-third of the, the actual, um, mRNA, and the good thing is that it can be kept ultra-cold like the Pfizer, but it doesn't have as, the way it's configured, it's not as fastidious or, uh, fussy, a cold chain, so once it thawed, it can be kept for up to, I think, seven, 70 days, seven weeks in a refrigerator. So it'll actually make the, the deployment of it easier. So it can be kept long-term in ultra-cold, which say the state health departments and the federal depots have, but once it gets out to the clinic, if they don't have that capability, they can just put the flaps of vaccine in the refrigerator, and they'll, they'll keep up to seven weeks. Pardon me? Oh, t- 10 weeks, 70 days, yes, thank you. Um, each dose, um, and then trials show that this is very effective, that 91% of, uh, children, uh, that were vaccinated had no severe, uh, COVID cases of, um, or hospitalizations. So this is a strong protective effect. Trials had no reports of myocarditis, of pericarditis, or anaphylaxis, which are the sort of, uh, key, um, potential complications that we would focus on, and no participant deaths, and they included two months of follow-up. So we had tens of thousands of, of person months that were followed in this, in this data. Most common immune responses were not that different from adults' pain at the injection site fatigue and headache, and most resolved within under two days. Now, when it, entire, unless there's questions on any of this, we're going to change gears substantially and give a-
George, the only thing I wanted to, um, add, Commissioner Dares asked about when vaccines became available, I just wanted to clarify that population-wise, for the county, it was a bit later than that. What George was alluding to was for a specific group, uh, in the long-term care facilities and the healthcare workers, where we did have vaccine rollouts. So I just wanted to make that distinction.
Well, and the bulk of vaccines, so the bulk of vaccinations done in Deschutes County were during the mass vaccination events, and those were March through May.
Well, I was just, um, looking at the chart of the breakthrough, what I was, um, kind of surprised about was 3.8% breakthrough in March 21st. And I, I'm, if I'm remembering correctly, Pfizer was, wasn't it the first approved, and that's what we were using? And it just-
Did it mean March 20?
Uh, March 20, no, on the chart, the breakthrough cases are high, but the first week you have on that chart is March, and so that means that we had breakthrough, if we started in December, we had breakthrough already, only a couple of months- already, only a couple of months later.
Yeah, so I think it's a good reminder, Commissioner, and thanks for bringing this up. It's a good reminder, if you'll allow me, George, that both from lab data that we had and then from real-life observations that we had and experiments that we had, basically, we know that vaccines are not 100% effective, right? So roughly around 90% and above, so nine out of 10 seroconvert and are protected. So what we see early on in March and beyond is reflection of the both efficacy and effectiveness of the vaccines that we see.
Oh, I see. You're talking about March 21st of 2020?
Right.
That's what I was, that's what I was asking about, which is when we start the, the chart. So this is actually...
Twenty-one.
It's 21, actually, because that's when we, we didn't start vaccinating until the end of 2020.
That's a reflection of the vaccines not being 100%.
So, forgive me. This is another reason why we are doing additional vaccinations, both boosters and additional doses for people with underlying conditions in hope of, of helping with this, but it is a reality. Thanks very much for the question.
I, I'm also remembering that in the very early days of vaccination of healthcare workers, there was, there was a, you know, a story of, you know, like a whole bunch of healthcare workers who, you know, maybe had gotten their, their first dose or, you know, were, were really early on in the process of getting vaccinated, but they, there were social gatherings and, and there were a lot of infections. I mean, is it possible that this, you know, this breakthrough number, very, very, very early in the, in the vaccination process, is people who were not fully vaccinated yet, who nonetheless got COVID?
Well, to meet the criteria for breakthrough, they'd have to have been fully vaccinated. So that's, it's inherent in the case.
Yeah, if I can add...
Please do.
There, there is one other thing that we, we need to consider. Like back in March, I'm kind of guessing, but the vaccination rate was probably less than 20% of the population. And so as the vaccinated population, the proportion of those vaccinated grows, you absolutely can expect the number of breakthrough cases to, to expand or to grow as well. Think about it, if only 5% of the population is vaccinated, you're going to have very few breakthrough cases. If 95% of the population is vaccinated, virtually everybody's vaccinated, so almost every case that occurs is going to be a breakthrough case. So I mean, mathematically, you can expect this number to grow over time. And back in March, we, we really didn't have a very high vaccination rate. And Commissioner Chang, you commented about, was it those who weren't fully vaccinated? Well, we did have an incident where a bunch of caregivers were infected, but they were not yet, if I recall, fully vaccinated. They'd only had their first dose, or it wasn't the 14 days after their second dose, when we had that big breakthrough in Redmond, but...
Sure, sure, which was partially centered in a healthcare organization.
Yeah.
The other thing is that as we did roll out the vaccinations, if you remember, after the very high-risk environments in healthcare workers, we started vaccinating the very old first. So the people that were fully immunized first would be those, the occupational groups, but then also the very old were fully immunized first. So, so in the beginning of this time, you had people that may have even with vaccination less inherent immunity than the general population, and we've moved more to the general population of adults and now adolescents being vaccinated. Is that, anything else on that before we move on, or, or financial update, and then we'll move on to hospital?
Next slide.
Cheryl, are you with us? Cheryl Smallman, our...
I, I am here. Good morning. Cheryl Smallman, Business Officer for Health Services. And this is part of the monthly American Rescue Plan Act funds for COVID-19 efforts. So just a reminder, to date, we've had $2 million that are earmarked in support of public health COVID-19 activities and efforts. $1,275,000 has been approved for expenditure on temporary staffing and wraparound services through the end of December of this year. So as you can see to date, we have $608,000 that have been approved and expended. I looked this morning, we have another $230,000 that is, it's pending. So I expect that to process later this week. That brings our total up to almost $840,000 that's been expended, which is 65% of that approved amount. If we project the current rate out, it looks like we will fully expend the, the allotted $1,275,000 roughly in the, about the first full week of December, so early December. However, in conversations with Nahad Sodhi, the Public Health Director, we do anticipate expenses to decrease as cases, as cases also decrease, but at this time, we, we don't, we don't have an estimate of when that may occur, specifically because of the rollout of the boosters. We're getting an immense amount of calls in our call center, for instance. So those are some of the areas that we also staff with temporary staffing. At this time, we don't have a request for additional funds. So if the current trend does continue, as part of the November update, I will let you know what, what we've seen, what has been expended, how we anticipate the, the future expenditure to look. And then if warranted, I may ask for the department to increase the approved funding and, and draw out of that $700,000 that's remaining in contingency that's earmarked. That will come through the formal ARPA update that comes through finance. So that's sort of next steps, that's where we're at. Any questions on the ARPA funds?
So Cheryl, do you know how much we're spending on a weekly basis for contact tracing? I know it was $52,000 the last time we heard.
Well, contact tracing is a portion of the temporary staff that we have. So our average weekly temporary staff bill is about $60,000 for the month of October. So that includes the staff for the call center, it includes the wraparound services staff, as well as case investigation and contact tracing.
And vaccination, of course.
And that's $60,000 a week now?
$60,000.
A week, okay.
A week.
Great, so this is a point in time, just to understand the, the scope and scale and the, the rate of expenditure as the weeks go on.
Well, and I'll just point out that we do appreciate the elected officials' support for these, these funds so that we can add critical staff during, during this problematic time. Cheryl, anything else to add?
That's it, and...
Okay, thanks very much.
I mean, I just want to ask, you know, December is not that far away. We're at the end of October already. I mean, does, does this provide you with adequate predictability and stability of, of resource, funding resource availability to, to know that you can retain or, or contract and retain the people that you need to do the job?
Well, it's always recruiting people that are on either short-term tenure as an employee or contractors is, is difficult because it's, you know, it's time limited. So inherently, that's a, that's a problem. And it may continue to be a problem. And certainly, as we get closer to the endpoint of the availability of funds, that compounds it. Cheryl, do you want to comment further on that, or Nahad?
Go ahead, Cheryl.
I think at this point in time, I, I think we do have adequate funds that are earmarked. I anticipate probably coming to the board in November 10th, I believe is the next COVID update. And I think we'll know more at that point in time. So at this juncture, I am not, I think that we have adequate funds.
Well, we'll take a look at this every other week, too.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thanks very much. We're going to move on to the medical system update. Michael, and I'll go ahead and advance slides, so please let me know when you want to go ahead. Here's your title slide.
Awesome, thank you very much, and thank you for your time, once again. We'll jump right into the slides. The, the first one you're looking at here kind of tells a, a real story of just how painfully slow we've been recovering from the Delta surge. Some of that variability that you see in the far right-hand side of that upper chart is due to some data lag, but generally speaking, we are, we are coming down at a glacial pace compared to the rest of the state for several reasons that we've already discussed. I think, as, as well as what has also been mentioned previously is the positivity rates, and, and those two are being stubborn up around, you know, north of, of 10 or 11% for all three counties for several weeks now. But we do need those to come down before we can really expect things to, to become manageable again. And next slide, please. This is a busy slide, and I'll, I'll just highlight some of the, the main takeaways. In the upper right is, is a chart that shows both the, the proportion that a region is of the entire state population, and then the yellow bar shows the proportion of COVID patients. We are in Region 7, along with seven other counties, but Deschutes County is, is the largest of all those by a, by a great deal. The, our tri-county area comprises 74% of that Region 7, and Deschutes County is 59% of, of Region 7. But, I mean, whereas we only occupy 8% of the population, we currently have 17% of the COVID patients in a hospital bed. That's kind of tells the story that I, I mentioned before, that everybody else seems to be recovering at a, at a much faster pace than us. The other chart on the bottom left, the takeaway there is, even though our region is, is not doing so well, there are a couple of counties within our region that are much, much overrepresented. And those two counties, or those two areas are Crook County in particular, and what I'm calling other counties, which without exception, if I recall recently, are only counties that are contiguous to our tri-county area. So, and to our, slightly to our north and, and to our east and to our south. So Deschutes County, although you're 80% of the population of our tri-county area, you can see that you're, we're representing much less than 80% of the current hospital beds. Next slide, please. So this is the predictive model that is updated daily. You can see that big shoulder that's, that's showing up. And even this morning, I had to adjust it to have a slower recovery than this. So we're probably not going to be down around, you know, less than 20 patients in the hospital until right around Thanksgiving. So it's, it's just, that's, that's where we are. Next slide, please.
Uh, Dr. Johnson, that was good news. I mean, that you are telling us it's only 54% of Deschutes County, so I know people look at that number, too.
I'm sorry, I only caught part of that?
Oh, I just meant, it's good that we only account for 54% of the patients, even though we're 80% of the population. So I'm just saying, you know, at least that number for Deschutes County appears better.
Mm-hmm. And, and I attribute that, that's, thank you for that observation. There's a couple of reasons for that. I think the primary one is, is shown on this slide, and you can see that in every age category, Deschutes County has a higher vaccination rate than the other two counties in our tri-county area, and the rest of our neighboring counties to the northeast and south are down there somewhere around Crook County, if I had to generalize. So I think that this is a, a big reason that Deschutes County is doing fairly better, but also those other things that I had mentioned previously, the average age, the, some of the, the SVI, and some of those kind of things. But, so the only other comment that I make, want to make on this slide is, these numbers, you know, they do look fairly good for, for Deschutes County, but they are almost absolutely set in stone now. In the past two weeks, when you saw this slide last time, it is, it's, it's grown more than, less than 1% overall. So we are just handfuls of vaccinations to new people each day. Next slide, please. ED visits, although they're going to be slightly better, about a 14% drop from the, the worst month of the pandemic, which was September, we're still basically tied with August for the second worst month. So our, our ED is, continues to see a, a large volume of COVID patients. Next slide. Taking a, a closer look at the pediatric cases, the orange line there represents the, the ED visits, and the blue line is hospitalizations. But, you know, we're, we may be a little bit better off overall with ED visits for COVID, but not in the area of the 18 and under. That is going to increase in the, in the month of, of October, and just a very slight increase from the all-time high for hospitalizations. And once again, these are not shared equally amongst the three counties proportional to their population. Deschutes County in October is 51% of the pediatric ED visits, and you can see the, the huge share of Crook County and Jefferson County, each of which comprise about 10% equally of the tri-county population. This is a very upsetting slide to me, just incredible number of patients dying. The report this, I ran this morning, there's three more cases, three more patients who died yesterday, one from Deschutes, two from Crook County. Two of those three were under 60 years old, and that's kind of been the story. That we are on average, since I want to say the beginning of August, I did this just yesterday, we've had on average over one and a half patients die each day since the beginning of August. And that, that's about a four and a half-fold increase over what we used to see. It used to be about a third of a patient for the first 400 days of the pandemic. You know, about one patient would die about every three days. Now we're having over one and a half patients die every day. That's, that's tough. And you can see the numbers on the left, if you want to see how those are broken down by, by county. And I believe my last slide is the one having to do with breakthrough cases. I, I think it's important to point out that what was spoken, what was displayed earlier was breakthrough cases of, of just positive cases. I'm looking at hospitalized cases. Certainly, my, my emphasis is on the, on the resources of our, our health system, because that's basically who pays my check every month. But looking at the county perspective, yes, it's important to, to look at the breakthrough cases just for the positive cases, but this goes back to, if you're vaccinated, even if you do contract COVID, you have a much less chance of being, having it being a severe case that requires hospitalization. And this also shows what I had mentioned before, that as the proportion of our... that as the proportion of our community becomes vaccinated, we absolutely expect that breakthrough percentage to increase slightly. And that's kind of what we're seeing. But since the beginning of when there was an opportunity for a breakthrough case right around March, on average, 82% of all of the patients who we've seen have been unvaccinated. The only other thing I really want to point out here is those breakthrough cases are on average 14 years older than a non-breakthrough patient. So they are the older patients who are hospitalized. But then again, I can't say this with much detail, but there is a high probability that many of those breakthrough cases that were hospitalized, had they not been vaccinated, would have either spent more time in the ICU or perhaps even died. So it does lessen, even for the worst-case scenarios, if you are hospitalized, the vaccinations do help your chances of survival. And with regard to the boosters, we just haven't had enough time yet to see whether or not that's going to keep that breakthrough, you know, that the trend of increasing breakthrough cases that may help keep that at bay in the months to come, we can only hope. And the hope is not whether or not the boosters work, but that people go out and get them. Probably need to emphasize that. And that does it for my slides. Happy to answer any questions, if there are any.
Looks like no questions. Thank you so much, Dr.
Thank you so much, Dr. Johnson.
So moving along to our update on vaccination and boosters. Ms. Freeland, are you still with us?
I am still here and happy to go over this quickly. As I know, probably people have other places to be and other things to do. So we'll talk a little bit about what the county is currently doing and what our numbers look like. So the first thing we're going to go over is something we've seen week over week, which is that percentage of our population that's 18 and up that's fully vaccinated or either fully vaccinated or have a series in progress. And that stands right now at about 78.3%. Like Dr. Johnson mentioned, this number is not going up quickly. You know, we're seeing, you know, marginal gains week over week as most of our vaccinations that we're giving currently are probably, in our county as a whole, not just within Health Services, are skewing towards those boosters. So that's about 6,587 people per 10,000 that are vaccinated. Next slide, please.
Actually, Emily, if I could just interject one thing. So this slide, I think, illustrates one of the environmental problems we have, as we mentioned in discussing your question, Commissioner Chang, about what's different here, where you have, we're basically to the east and the south, surrounded by counties that have substantially lower vaccination rates than the rest of the state.
So if we look at the vaccines that are administered as a whole in Deschutes County from the middle of July until now, we see that most of those vaccines are being distributed through pharmacies and PCP clinics. So that's, you know, with this distributive model that we've moved to from the mass vacs, this is what we would expect and we want to see. You can see right around the week of 9/26, we had a substantial jump in the number of vaccines administered, and that was when the Pfizer booster dose was approved. So you can see that significant difference between about 2,000 doses being administered to over 4,000 that week. We expect that we'll see another bump this week, and we've already seen that in our pop-up clinics with both Johnson &amp; Johnson and Moderna boosters being approved to start this last weekend. Next slide, please. So we've had a lot of questions about, you know, what are the recommendations and how are these approvals made? So it's a pretty long and extensive process here in Oregon. First, the drug company submits data to the FDA. The FDA then, you know, recommends, the Vaccine-Related Biological Products Advisory Committee recommends what they think should happen based on that data. Then the FDA makes an official recommendation. That goes to the CDC, and then the CDC reviews and makes recommendations. That then goes to the director, who makes the recommendation. Then that process has to go to the Western State Scientific Safety Review Work Group. So we kind of wait for that. In the news, a lot of times people will say, oh, the FDA has made this approval. Why aren't you doing it now? Because there's all these steps that have to happen before that happens. So once the Western States goes over and makes their own recommendation, that goes to the governor for a final decision for the state. And then the Oregon health system implements that. And then we're able to get our health officer to implement it locally, and we're able to give the vaccine after that. So it's a long process, and often we get lots of questions. People are showing up at clinics as soon as the FDA has made that initial recommendation, which we have a lot of steps that have to happen before we can actually give the vaccine. Next slide, please. It looks like this one may not be showing up for some reason. We wanted to go over a couple of things about Halloween safety. This weekend is coming up, and there'll be lots of parties and activities related to Halloween, so we can make the Halloween a safe holiday. Just thinking about large groups of people, masking up if you're around a lot of people, making sure if you're handing out candy, you're putting on a mask, and hopefully the flow of the door is doing that outside and making sure that, you know, kids have room to move around so that we're not in huge groups of unmasked and keeping that outside if possible. Next slide, please. So we are getting a lot of questions around booster shots and if people are eligible. So like I mentioned before, booster shots are now available in our community and state. We are giving these at our pop-up clinics. And the who is if you have received Pfizer or Moderna, the full series, and it's been at least six months since your second dose, you're 65 and older, or you're in a group that's 18 and older, but you live in long-term care, you have underlying medical conditions, or you live or work in a high-risk setting, you are able to receive a booster shot. If you've received the J&amp;J vaccine and you're over 18, and it's been at least two months after your dose, your only dose, then you are also eligible. You are able to kind of mix and match which vaccine you'd like. So if you've gotten J&amp;J, you can get a booster of J&amp;J, or you can get a Pfizer or Moderna, and vice versa. So these are available in our community. And like I mentioned before, you know, we saw that pretty steep uptick after Pfizer was approved. And now with Moderna and J&amp;J also approved, we're seeing lots of numbers come into our pop-up clinics as well as, we know pharmacies and PCPs are also seeing that. Next slide, please. So we want to also encourage people to get flu vaccines with their COVID vaccines. So you can either get them at different times or at the same time. If you're going for an appointment at a pharmacy or your PCP and you're able to get both at the same time, we certainly recommend that, one appointment, and you can get both. Or if you have already gotten your booster and you need to get the flu vaccine, please do so to help keep our community safe. Next slide, please.
If I could interrupt. So Commissioners, you should have in your printout, there's another portion to this slide, and for some reason or another, it's not projecting here, just differentiating among COVID-19 flu or a severe common cold. So basically, if you're quite ill with any of the related symptoms, it's good to consult with your primary care provider to help sort this out. There are some diagnostic tests available as well. Thanks, Emily.
Thank you. So we get lots of questions on where can I get a booster dose? So like I mentioned before, you can get booster doses at pharmacies. You can get them perhaps through your primary care physician. You can get these through DCHS vaccine clinics. These are all listed on our website, on our Facebook page. We also have more opportunities coming up. We are partnering with FEMA to have some drive-through vaccine clinics in Lapine, Bend, and Redmond the first two weeks of November. So there should be lots of availability to get those booster doses. Or if you are deciding to go ahead and get any of the first doses, second doses, you need any COVID vaccine at all, you can get them at all of these places. So we certainly want to recognize that people want to get their booster doses, but we also are encouraging those first and second doses. And I know at our DCHS clinics, we do have a separate line for people that are there for their first and second doses. So you can, you know, we are prioritizing those doses and making sure that, you know, we're making sure that people get their first and second doses before the booster doses. Next slide, please.
Emily, just very quickly on that point, I think it's important to mention that especially in our vaccine clinics run by Health Services, we have limited doses available. So if, as a community member, you're able to make an appointment through your pharmacy, primary care provider, please do so so that we make those limited slots and doses available to those who really cannot make other arrangements.
Thank you, Nahad. I would also just mention, you know, sometimes there is a line, and people are waiting some time to get their booster dose at these clinics. You know, we're moving as quickly as we can, and we only do have a limited number of doses at these clinics. So if you can wait, and just reminding yourself that you're well-protected. If you've had the first and second dose, you do still have a good level of protection there. So it's okay to wait, you know, a small amount of time to get that booster. Next slide, please. So the centraloregoncovidvaccine.com is still the best source of information for finding out where you can get doses of COVID vaccines. All of the providers are listed there, including, you can see, Deschutes County. So if you click there, it'll take you to our site, which lists all of our pop-up clinics, the hours, as well as those drive-through FEMA clinics that I mentioned. Next slide, please. And if you have questions, you can always go to deschutes.org/covid19vaccine. You can email us, or you can call the vaccine hotline. There's people there to answer the phone Monday through Friday from 9 to 5. We answer lots of questions on vaccine-related issues, where to get it, how to get it, who can get it, all of those kind of questions, as well as other general COVID-19 questions. So, thank you.
Thanks very much, Emily. I do want to emphasize one other thing that I mentioned near the beginning, and that is that we're doing these every other week. So by November 9, we may already have the authorization and already be either poised or giving school-age children 5 to 11 vaccine. We're working very closely with the state to plan. We're working very closely with our partners, including COPA, the school district, the FQHCs, so that we can rapidly deploy and distribute these. We're also encouraging community providers to register as vaccinators even smaller clinics, because there's fewer doses per pack and because of the refrigeration rather than the ultra-cold. We're hoping that many small pediatric practices and family medicine practices will also take this on. So just want to bring that so it's top of mind and for parents to be contemplating this.
Yeah. George, just as a parent, not as a public health director, but as a parent of twins who are seven and a half years old, if I may just add to this, I've been asked a number of times, especially by my neighbors, regarding my intentions. And I think I've been very transparent and honest with them. Had this vaccine rolled out maybe six months ago, I probably, for my kiddos, I probably would have thought more carefully around the timing of it and wondered. I think now, with number of months under our belt and with robust analysis around what the side effects might be, and doing some risk-benefit analysis in my own head with my kiddo, for example, my daughter having asthma, and the benefits versus the risks, certainly I feel very comfortable and confident in vaccinating them as soon as I'm able to get appointments for them. So that's where I stand in terms of that. I will also say that I will pass no judgment on any parent having any thoughts or concerns around vaccinating their kiddos. It's a bit different when it comes to adults. I feel probably a bit more judgmental when it comes to that. But certainly for parents of kiddos of that age group, I pass no judgment. The only thing I would ask is that we are deliberate, intentional, and skillful in our decision-making. So we have some framework around how we're going about deciding to vaccinate our kiddos. And I would encourage our parents, myself, everyone, to really seek reputable information sources for our decision-making. I shy away from the MSNBCs and the Foxes of the world to make decisions. I usually try to seek places where I know there is impartial decision and judgment made based on facts and data.
On the 5 to 11 vaccines, do we have a sense yet of where those? You were just describing, you know, some of the possible options, but I mean, do we have a sense yet of where those are going to be? Where the majority of those are going to be distributed or administered? Or is it the, all the scenarios you just laid out, is it all of the above? Like, could it be happening at schools? Could it be happening at our mass vacs clinic, or, you know, our mobile clinics? Or is it really going to be happening at pediatricians' offices, or?
Well, we're hoping all of the above. But I think that we have one very large pediatric group practice, COPA, Central Oregon Pediatric Associates, that will be giving a lot of these. We're working with them, Mosaic Medical, Lapine Community Health Center, et cetera, to also be prepared to work with the schools to do sort of a mass vaccination light the way that we did in the high schools in the late spring and early summer last year. And the schools are interested in that. So there's an intent to deploy this as quickly as humanly possible, and of course, based on demand.
So from the, just to add, from the great work that Ann Kilty has done in terms of analyzing the landscape and trying to fill the gaps, as George rightfully said, we expect the majority of the distribution or administering vaccines happening through the private settings like pharmacies and primary care providers, and you mentioned pediatric institutions. The gap that we do see is perhaps evening hours, and that's where we intend to fill the gap with some clinics through arrangements with schools and other settings. More information will be coming in the next couple of weeks. But we're trying to play our role as safety net and address some of the gaps.
Well, and the other thing is that we have a sort of both logistical and quality assurance role in making sure that the vaccine distribution is going well, whether it's directly or involving us touching hands, and then also making sure that it's duly recorded. And sometimes confusing to use state data systems so that there's good information and good records for this. So I want to thank you for a lot of provocative and thoughtful questions today. I hope that we're able to answer them to some level of satisfaction.
I'd say we had quite an update today, a good hour and a half or a little bit more than that even. So usually, we don't go this long. A lot of kind of new topics, you know, talking about the vaccines and the therapies, some analysis. Dr. Johnson really providing some good information about the whole Central Oregon wave that we are dealing with here and how we're going to get through this. So a lot of great conversation today, and we'll see you in two weeks.
If you want to take a break from us, let us know.
We would like to.
No, we want to see you every week. How about two weeks? How about two weeks, we'll do it again?
Yeah, the numbers don't indicate a break.
When those numbers come down, it'll be a welcome break.
Okay, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you again for the breakthrough numbers.
Okay, so one more item, this item, or before our lunch break is what I'm referring to, is item number 10, the status update regarding the Cascade Medical Transport relative to the ASA agreement with Lapine Rural Fire. So this was added item after we had published the agenda. I just had a note about following up on this, and I was like, oh, we should put this on the agenda. So let's work together, figure out, you know, as a board, where So let's work together, figure out, you know, what, as a board, where we want to go with it and if there's new information. So Chris Bell, thank you very much. Tom Coon's joining us. Chief Kemna. And, yeah, we'll go from there.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner DeBoe. Yeah, today was scheduled for a status update. This data been mentioned in the last hearing, um, we had, I believe, on October 13th, um, to follow up, uh, on, uh, gathering information on the board's ultimate, uh, decision, uh, which is whether to approve CMT as a subcontractor for the Lapine, uh, Rural Fire Protection District. Today, we have Chief Kemna, who I believe has a report, um, from Kafka, which is the Central Oregon Fire Chiefs Association, um, and their discussions, I believe, with Chief Supkis with regard to whether they had any concerns about, uh, the proposed subcontracting relationship and the contract in general, or, or contract specifically. Also here is, uh, Tom Coon, who is the ASA Advisory Committee Administrator. So I think, uh, probably be best use of time to hear from Chief Kemna on behalf of Kafka and then to discuss any other matters that, uh, the board wishes to discuss today.
So a little bit of business, so this is, uh, kind of more information on, in a record, you know, we just think of, uh, public hearings or not. So I mean, I'm just confirming the board is understanding this is more information to the data set that we have from the record we've, uh, started to create on this subject. And also I do see Chief Supkis is, uh, available, uh, on the video also. So, you know, I don't know that procedurally we could really do anything wrong here, I'm just acknowledging that, let's take some information today. So Chief Kemna, if you'd like to start, uh, and then we'll go from there.
Absolutely. Thank you, Commissioner. Um, and, and thank you, first of all, I, I really want to start off by saying thank you to Central Oregon Fire Chiefs, really does appreciate the opportunity, uh, to assist you in making this decision. We appreciate the fact that you allowed us to have some discussion as a group, uh, about this. Um, just by, just by way of sort of closing the loop on the conversation that we had had, this was not a conversation, um, that had been given a lot of, a lot of airtime with the Central Oregon Fire Chiefs Association, even though Chief Supkis is a member of that body, this has not been, uh, a large topic of conversation as we've been dealing with a lot of other things over the last, uh, last couple of years, to be honest with you. Um, uh, but at your direction, the Central Oregon Fire Chiefs did take this up. As a topic, uh, Chief Supkis was good enough, uh, to share with us all the necessary documents to provide background, uh, on the discussions that had taken place thus far with the, with the county commissioners, um, with the ASA committee, um, and with, uh, with his group in, in terms of developing an agreement with, uh, Cascade Medical Transport, um, as a subcontractor to provide service in the Lapine, uh, area. Um, Chief Supkis attended the meeting and, um, I would say we had a very good, uh, robust discussion. We spoke for the better part of an hour. Chief Supkis did a presentation on the agreement, um, what the basic premise of the agreement was, uh, and then he answered questions. And I would say many of the questions, um, really circled around several of the items that we'd already discussed as part of the ASA, um, and, and what the ASA committee had already discussed. So I think it was a really good opportunity for us just to sort of validate that the questions were asked and answered. Uh, Chief Supkis did an excellent job, uh, of providing input, uh, on all of those subjects. And, and obviously the general sense, uh, of the group, uh, following that discussion was there, there is no direct opposition from the Central Oregon Fire Chiefs to Lapine Rural, uh, moving forward with this agreement. That being said, there's, there are still some unknowns. And the Central Oregon Fire Chiefs Association is a major stakeholder and providing emergency medical services to the county, um, is obviously concerned about downstream impacts as, as we have already all noted. That was discussed, um, though we can't predict the future, it is just something that we are mindful of. Um, and this is going to be an ongoing topic of conversation for us, just to make sure that we're all sort of keeping our eye on something that is, uh, that concerns us all. Um, so I would say that from the Central Oregon Fire Chiefs perspective, there is no opposition to Lapine moving forward. Um, there's, there's no necessary support either, but we just wanted the opportunity to at least discuss it and provide some input to you. Um, that's essentially my report. I don't have anything else that I would necessarily share, but I'm more than happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you very much.
Um, Chief Kemna, what are your unknowns that you clearly identify?
Well, one of, one of the concerns that, that was raised in both the ASA committee and amongst the Central Oregon Fire Chiefs was the, the likelihood of a large private provider wanting to come into Central Oregon and potentially create an issue for us in terms of being able to provide service within our own, uh, ASA. Some of us have experience in, in other systems, either here in Oregon or in other states, where the private providers really exert a lot of influence. Um, and unfortunately, that can be problematic when, um, when it comes to the provision or continuity of the provision of emergency medical services throughout a county. So that is, that is probably the single biggest issue that I would say is, is a potential downstream impact that we just want to be, uh, we want to keep on our radar screen and we want to be mindful of. The, the system that we have here in Central Oregon, and we're, obviously we're talking about Deschutes County, uh, but, but we can't really talk about that without involving Kirk County and Jefferson County as well as, you know, it's, it's a, it's a very interdependent system. Um, and, and that being the case, we recognize that one small change in one small area of the system can have an impact. Um, and it's just, uh, that is just the one unknown that we would be concerned about. If Central Oregon continues to grow, I suspect this market will become more attractive to private providers, uh, and it's just something for us to be, to be mindful of.
Great. Mr. Chang.
Thank you.
Chief Kemna, did you, uh, did Kafka discuss, uh, essentially the assignment through the, the draft subcontract of, uh, CMT to these particular locations and the question of whether, uh, we would get adequate response time or reasonable response time for those locations?
Uh, the topic came up and, and there was discussion about the specific addresses and response times, uh, to those addresses. I think Chief Supkis, um, a- again, he, he provided input to our body, much as he did to you regarding the, the response times and how they're going to meet the response times in, in their area. The, the conversation we had at Central Oregon Fire Chiefs really, uh, from, from that perspective, sort of led more towards what is the impact on CMT and CMT's ability to continue to provide service to the rest of Deschutes County. Many of us rely upon CMT as a resource for us as well, uh, specifically during the, our response to COVID, uh, they picked up a, a lot of the load for us and made, um, made it possible for us to continue to serve the community. That's where the conversation really went. So there wasn't a whole lot of attention paid to, uh, whether or not Lapine would be able to meet their response time obligations. Um, but Chief Supkis did address that with the group.
So, so the discussion you had was sort of more about, uh, the, the potential downstream effects or ripple effects of this, uh, this subcontract on the other, um, on the other, uh, you know, uh, on the other fire districts. It was not necessarily evaluating, you know, kind of whether this was a, an effective way to deliver service within, um, within Lapine, uh, Fire.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Uh, you characterized it perfectly. Our focus was real, our focus really, for lack of a better way to put it, was, was on us and not on Lapine. Uh, the, the provision of services in Lapine is really Chief Supkis's responsibility and the board's responsibility to make sure that that service is being provided effectively according to the agreement and the ASA. We really were focused on ourselves and how this might impact the rest of us.
Thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So, uh, I know Chief Supkis is here. Do you have, uh, want to share any thoughts or respond to anything? Just give us more information and then maybe make yourself available for questions if there are two.
Thank you, Commissioner DeBoe. No, I think that Chief Kemna did a great job of summing up the meeting and, um, and, and, and the potential downstream concern that the rest of the fire districts have and, and, um, we hope that the county can move forward on this. Um, we're looking for your support. These resources are desperately needed. I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. And then Tom Coon, do you have anything to add?
Uh, yes. Uh, I just had a couple of things I want to mention. Uh, part of it was addressed by Chief Kemna. Um, and first off, I want to say I am in support of a contract between Lapine Rural Fire Protection District and CMT to support emergency transport. There were a couple of concerns I have, um, and these were ones that shared by the ASA committee's members as well as also, um, the clinics that reached out to me, uh, during this, um, time in regards to contracts. Uh, you know, there's still the concern about that specific locations are identified in the contract rather than having it referring to the general community. Um, to me, this gives the impression that they are going to receive a different type of ambulance service than the general community. So that's just something that stands out. And, um, as Chief Kemna addressed, a little concerned about CMT, if they're staging an ambulance and Ben to respond to Lapine, and just what will that look like? If they start doing that, will that mean, uh, anytime certain locations are having CMT come in, that it could be a much longer response time? So those were my two main concerns and, uh, that's what, all I want to really share.
Good, thank you so much. So as I say, today's an update, uh, but it could be a good time for the board as the three of us to set some direction to this, um, you know, uh, any thoughts to start with? Because I, I could start going, but I want to hear from the other commissioners.
We're not actually a signature on this document. We're just giving it our blessing, correct?
Well, yeah, I mean, so this is for us to talk about. Exactly. So this is a request from one of our ASA franchisees to add private resources. And there was a proposed contract, and it was mentioned, a third, a three-way contract, which I don't specifically support. I mean, I think we either authorize it or we don't, and then there's a contract between the, the providers. So this is right, this is where we need to start landing some of this stuff because it's all been discussed here.
For months.
Yeah.
And I do want to congratulate Lapine on their, what is it, $660,000 award for their program. So, um, I believe that was just announced the other day. That will be, um, those funds I'm sure will be welcome in that community. So congratulations, Chief Supkis, for that.
Thank you. I have to support our board. Um, we're looking at every rock, look under to, to get the service we need from the community, and not one of these is a, is a complete solution. More resources, and that's why I have to understand, this is the, gets one key piece to a lot of different things this fire district is doing to ensure that every citizen in our community gets the quickest response they can. So, but thank you for the, the kudos. It's, um, we're excited about it too.
I, I thought it was outstanding.
Mr. Chang?
We still need to, that, that inclusion in that appropriations bill is really exciting, but we, uh, Congress does still need to pass it. So we'll hope, we'll hope that they can get that budget, uh, the budget for the fiscal year that started, uh, almost a month ago now, um, that, that they'll actually get that passed pretty soon. Um, I guess, uh, you know, I, I would say I am in, I am in support of, uh, augmenting the capacity of Lapine Fire with, uh, with CMT. I still have concerns about the way that this contract is, is structured. The, the two concerns that Tom mentioned are, are, you know, are, are the concerns that I've, I've expressed, that, um, these, these specified locations, uh, may get, you know, it, it creates the, you know, specifying these locations in the contract in the way that they are, it, it gives the impression that they will get different treatment. And I am not sure that people can feel comfortable that they will get, um, an adequate level of service, um, with the way that this is, this is phrased. And, uh, response time, I think, is, is the, the primary concern, you know, and I don't think, I don't think people have concerns about CMT being a quality operation. I think that the concern is, you know, if you're, if you're in a highly central location in Lapine, you know, what, what guarantee do you have that, that people will be getting to you quickly? Um, and I, I understand that with the capacity constraints, uh, Lapine Fire is facing, that there's, there's not, you know, there's, there's issues, you know, people need to be worried whether they'll, will be, whether they will get adequate response time, uh, without CMT as well. But I, I just, I, I, I want to ask whether the contract could be structured differently to address those concerns.
Um, the district is definitely listening to those. Um, we were just going to be very transparent. Um, we could drop those addresses out of the contract and run it just like we do our ASA now, and, um, the resources will be dispatched as our duty commander seal fit, and we will meet the time requirements that are, need to be met for ASA. However, I do want to remind the board that when you look at these things, you know, you're, you're, you may be looking at through the lens of one call, one ambulance. And what we're seeing today is multiple calls happening simultaneously, and the clinics are now waiting. The people, and the, the good news is, is the people in the clinic have announced standing physician and care, professional care providers and, um, a medical facility where they're at. Um, the person that calls home from 911 or has their neighbor's house on fire, or they're out on the highway in a motor vehicle accident on 97, um, they've got to wait for the next available resource. So people are waiting now. As I mentioned two weeks ago, um, this year already, we have had over 40 people have their hearts stopped before our medics arrived. Um, that's tragic, that's in crisis. So we're adding more resources. If the commissioners, you know, if you want the contract to be less trans, we were very transparent with the contract. If, um, we can remove that three, four addresses and, um, add them to our run card like we do today, um, and the board, you know, if that's the suggestion from your board pending that we do that, we can do that.
So, uh, if there's the will of the board to get to yes, I think that's where we're going here, uh, I think there's a little bit of business case about how are we going to do this? Because if there's just a, a kind of a yes or no, thumbs up, thumbs down from the board of commissioners to provide resources, uh, and then it's a contract, it's not a three-party contract, it's a two-party contract with authorization as in the ASA, then, yeah, I'd like to see the next, yeah, the, you know, what is that going to look like?
I think for clarity, you would want to have a board order approving, uh, the agreement between CMT and Lapine Fire, which would then be attached as an exhibit to that order. So there'd be a clear record for all time, what it was you approved. We wouldn't be questioning which iterations of the contract you approved or didn't approve.
And that was...
And, and so that could be done as soon as Monday, if you wanted it, it could be back in front of you folks Monday afternoon, assuming the agreement is in the final, you know, wording that you're comfortable with.
And that's right where, yeah, that's good. So that could be the mechanism, an order referring to a specific version and date signed agreement. Uh, and then, so then the next step is if that, you know, as soon as there's, uh, you know, downstream impacts or unintended consequences and something needs to be edited, how does that cycle happen? Like a version of a contract would be changed?
I suspect that will go back through the ASA and, and work its way through that and come back to you from the advisory committee. I don't know, Chris, you might have a different opinion, or Tom Coon's still on the line, I see.
Um, I do have a question. The address on Burgess is not, they're not into operation yet, are they? So truly, if this document goes in the way it's worded now, there's only three addresses that are currently in operation? Is that right?
That's correct. We were, we were planning ahead that we're getting, fortunately, Lapine getting another medical care facility, more senior ment, um, um, senior care, um, but they will have professional medical staff and, but you're right, they're, they haven't been, um, up and running yet. They're getting close to.
Oh, that's good. I mean, I think they're a wonderful addition, um, but I just didn't think they'd opened up yet. So, great.
Good. So now we, there's a proposed mechanism, a board order approving, uh, the, the private resources in the ASA and acknowledging a specific dated contract.
Certainly a specific iteration of the contract that could be attached as an exhibit. Whether it was actually signed and dated at that point is a matter between those two other parties, but that would be the document that you folks are, are blessing or approving.
Yeah. So as I said, I just didn't, hadn't, hadn't heard that yet, but I mean, that can be the way to proceed there.
And, and I think, you know, given the, the, the changes made to the code, you know, I think your, uh, your concerns about how to structure whatever the board's decision is are well-taken. And that, I think, what the, the code basically provides is, is that it's your function, um, the board's function to approve CMT as a subcontractor. I do think, uh, given your, uh, authority as the, the oversight, um, authority for the franchisees, you do have the authority to, you know, put sidebars in as, as have kind of been discussed. You know, this is kind of what we want to see in the contract. But I agree also that the, the actual contract between the district and CMT is between them, and they, you know, within the parameters set by the board, um, can... and they, you know, within the parameters set by the board can, you know, draft that contract however they best see fit. Because again, with what Chief Kemna said, I also agree with, it's, it's their prerogative as to how to draft that contract, given the approval of CMT as approved by the board.
So, you know, the concerns are valid, you know, specific locations and then, you know, the future staging a unit in Lepine is mentioned also, just the concept of the load balancing of CMT. But that, that's in the domain of what resources are available private, private company. So the specific locations is the one tangible thing from my point of view.
To, to request to, to modify or tinker with in the, in the draft contract.
Yeah.
I, I, you know, based on what we heard during the hearing, that seems like, it seems like it would address a lot of the concerns that were, you know, that were expressed by various stakeholders in the community. It would, I, I would love to, if there's going to be a new draft of the contract, I would, I would really like to, to hear more feedback from people, you know, that, yes, this was what we were asking for, this is, this addresses our concerns.
Referring to those addresses now.
Yeah.
Yeah. So well, so how about we get, I mean, so it would be the request of the board, as I say, I want to make sure we're doing this together or acknowledging that we're not, you know, however proceeding, a version of the contract that's not, not showing specific addresses during those run hours. Chief, I think, Chief Subkus, I think you already mentioned that there's a different way to word that, that, you know, on-duty dispatch decisions are the terminology used a moment ago. So then if we have a new version of the contract, we'll have some black and white to look at and to see if we're starting to get, you know, agreement, and then that'll be available for feedback. And I don't know that we would have a public hearing on it or anything, but if it's publicly available for review, it would, it would have to be, right? I mean, as soon as Chief gives it to us or the fire district offers it to the county, it'd be a public document, because that was a little catch we were in. I don't know if I had the right version or not. So getting that last version, the proposed version on the table for everybody to review will get us to thumbs up or thumbs down.
But then again, you have to look at, if CMT has to make it economically viable and for them to have an ambulance sitting there waiting to go to Lepine, and they will know that those four addresses truly would help support that, that asset sitting there and waiting. And I don't want to discourage that. And the fact that people are waiting now, I really, I want to stop the waiting as much as we can.
Well, yeah, and the scenario is, I mean, if there's two Lepine ambulances in Bend at the emergency room, there's none in the district. So either way, somebody's coming from Bend and that's the district.
Well, I mean, I think having them for those four locations, but then, okay, what if there are two up here, you know, can they be called for a different address then? Is that a possibility with the contract or are they only going to go to those four addresses?
Well, if we, if you took the locations out of the contract, then I would think that they could, they could go to other addresses.
But I mean, I just know that for their business model, they want to know that they have four addresses that are significant and warrant signing the contract.
Well, and that'll be, that'll be the discussion. I mean, they won't sign it unless it's going to be...
I know. That's what I'm afraid of. Why, why would they, you know?
Well, we don't have that information.
But if they're not, if they're not talking about, if they're not talking about specifically actually staging an ambulance, you know, I don't, I don't understand their, I don't know the details of their business model, but if they're, if they're staging an ambulance in Lepine and, you know, basically they're, they're, they're on call as surge capacity, then it's not, it's not like they've made a huge investment to provide that extra capacity. If it's, if, you know, they might deploy the people that they have waiting in Bend at, at any given time anyway. But that does get into the concerns that, you know, Chief Kemna articulated, that, you know, if a slice of CMT's capacity is then kind of, you know, being responsive to Lepine with, you know, is that, are they as responsive to the rest of the region? And I, I don't think we know that until we try it.
It's always real-time load balancing. I mean, you know, 911 is either, probably either quiet or very busy at any moment to moment, right? So that's exactly what we're dealing with.
Yeah. So if we try this, you know, try this model and, you know, try this model, we could find, we may find that, you know, CMT needs more resources overall to cover the load it's now taking on, and they can respond to that. And we may find that Lepine Fire still isn't getting to the response times that they'd like to, you know, overall for the community. And if so, then, you know, you know, then, then, then we get to the next question of, you know, how do you build more, even more capacity? So, but it, it does seem like this is, this, this model is something worth trying and seeing how it works. And if it, if it's not fully meeting the needs of, of that community and the rest of the communities in Central Oregon, then, you know, then it's clear where we need to, we need to build more capacity. And then we can take the next step.
Commissioners, I just say too, and I think Chief Subkus alluded to this in his prior presentation, is there is a two-year sunset or a two-year renewal or, or review provision. So you automatically have that built in. And certainly if there are consumer complaints within the district, there is a complaint mechanism both in the ASA plan and in the county code, which would allow, you know, patients, consumers, the clinics to make a complaint to the board if, if there is a problem that is, needs to be addressed, or at least there's a perception of a problem. So I do think, you know, it's worthwhile to give Lepine Fire the chance to make this work. And, you know, if problems do arise, and I'm not saying they will, but if they do, there are mechanisms to deal with them.
Right. Okay. So let's, as a board, let's ask the fire district to provide an updated proposed contract, a two-party agreement to be referenced by order of the board. And, you know, with the discussion provided today, hopefully we'll see what we want to see. And, you know, there may be another cycle of feedback, but let's go from there.
Thank you for working with us on this and I hope we can, we can get to something that everyone feels good about and land this soon.
Okay. So Chief Subkus, are you clear? You know, we're looking for just the slightly updated version of a proposed contract.
Just to make sure I'm clear, we're going to take the addresses out and understand, see everything you talk about, it, I'm sitting here and my mind going 100 miles an hour. You know, you take those addresses out, you kind of, you know, you, you heard from Chief Kemna and the other fire districts, their biggest concern about is the private sector and their impacts on others. And we were trying to keep the focus of this is very, very limited. And, but understand the concerns I heard today, we have no objection of taking those, those sideboards off. You know, we also wanted to make sure our firefighters didn't think we were contracting out their jobs and things like that, which we're not. We're just trying to add capacity for these facility transfers that people are under medical care. Also, what's been missed in this conversation is CMT has added resources to address this contract. Right now, out on wildfires, because we thought we'd have this contract completed by early June. And so they, of course, have to pay for those resources. So they're out on contract and they'll be back very shortly. But CMT is adding capacity to do this with the understanding that, as Commissioner Dare said, we're giving them the guarantee that they're going to get so many, you know, looking at the past history, the last couple of years, we can guarantee them so many calls. And CMT is not saying they're not going to staff in Lepine. It's just that we're being totally transparent that that vehicle is going to be transporting back and forth all the time. And for CMT, they hope to, because that, that, their revenue stream. And, and that's where they're going to help. So a lot of that thought was put in here, but I heard, I believe I heard the county commissioners loud and clear, we will drop the four addresses off the contract and we will deal with that.
No, you only heard it from two people. You didn't hear it from all three of us. I did not want to drop them.
See, that's why we're working through this. It's okay.
No, I, I feel like, you know, this is business on one level. So, yeah, I, I appreciate you working this out and we definitely want to end response time waiting, so. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, go ahead. I'm just waiting for a direction. I'm more than happy to get you guys a contract by this afternoon or tomorrow afternoon till you have it Monday morning. So we can move forward on this. We desperately need these resources added to our run cards. And we were going to do it in a limited fashion, but we could take those sideboards off a little bit if that makes the commission feel comfortable. I just need to get two out of three head nods on that, so we don't have to redo this again.
Well, and that's why we're working through this. Yeah, I'd like to see a version without the addresses at this time, knowing that, as I say, as real-time dispatch happens, it'll be good to see how this really works and, you know, if it's the choice of, as I say, there was discussion of the, what, the A, B, C, and D calls or whatever it was, you know, the different priority calls. So I think there's scenarios in there where their CMT can be dispatched to those locations. But yeah, I mean, let's see how it starts to come together. Yeah.
Commissioners, just to clarify too, I think there was some discussion here today about respecting and acknowledging that the contract is between CMT and Lepine Fire and that the county is not a party. So I think the other thing that probably, just for clarifying, clear direction, is to just take the signature line that's currently on the, the contract for a county representative off of the contract.
Yeah. So is that clear? So, yeah, so we expect to see it like that, because we will do it by order for a specific version of the contract.
We're trying to exercise our overs, oversight responsibility, but we don't need to be signatory.
Good. So, yeah, with that proposed contract received by the county, we will reschedule this for final deliberations if, you know, if that's where we can get. I don't know if we want to set a date for that. I mean, a week from now would be the non-rushed version of this probably. But, I mean, you want to get other input from the clinics possibly?
Don't you think we should do it by Monday?
Oh, no. Not that fast.
I mean, we could have a snowstorm this weekend. I mean, it's really, I, I feel that this community has been impacted for months with this situation. And the sooner we can give them some clarity, if they're going to come back to us that soon, I would appreciate it.
The, the community has been impacted for years with this situation, it sounds like.
But we've been...
So one week would be the business case, just so then other entities could take a look at it once it's received.
Oh, excuse me, Commissioners?
Yeah.
Tom Kuhn here. I just had one question. This is something maybe Chris Bell can't answer. Would the, would CMT then have to be approved by the ASA committee as the franchisee per the language in the county code?
That's a good question, Tom. I haven't looked at that language in a while. I think, you know, approve maybe is a strong word, but certainly the, the, a recommendation was probably advisable. Perhaps we could just get a, a quick recommendation or, or not recommendation from the Advisory Committee on the QT. If we can set up a, a meeting in the next week, I think, you know, just to, to get a thumbs up or thumb, thumb down recommendation, I think would probably be wise. That way, that would be part of the record as well and that loop can be shut.
So I, I would, my first thought on that is, this is a specific proposed contract that we're going to reference, so it, it is naming a specific company. So I don't know that it would need to be another decisions point, point, because it would just, it'd be that document, which implies a specific company, because the document could be a different company also. So I don't know that, you know, CMT specifically is a decision point, but the document is, which implies that company. So is there a request? So we're the Board of Commissioners, we have an Advisory Committee. Is there a request that the ASA meets before we make a decision? Is that what, is that where we're at there? I guess Tom and Chris, can you help me with that?
And I guess...
I just wanted to note, the committee has looked at the, they have reviewed the application from CMT. There was no major concerns that came up, you know, some minor stuff, and they were a little more focused on the contract versus the actual application from CMT. I just want to make sure we weren't missing a step that we needed to go through.
And I, I guess I wanted to ask whether, you know, kind of procedurally or, you know, working with our, working with our systems and working with our legal requirements, whether the ASA would have to, ASA Advisory Committee would have to meet, or whether you could, whether sending it out to them and, and asking them to, you know, for their, their feedback would be sufficient?
Pardon me, I'm, yeah, I'm just thinking, I'm getting a little bit of clarity. I, I want that proposed contract to be received by the county, distributed to the ASA and the, the addresses that were mentioned previously. And if somebody wants to raise their hand, they can, but if they don't, they don't, because I think we've already been through this cycle. Everybody's like, well, maybe, maybe not. But we're not getting it landed by doing that. So I'm much more inclined to set a date for next Wednesday, get the document out by the end of the week, and somebody's going to have to raise their hand and ask us, ask politely to hold it up instead, because we've been through this a few times.
Okay. Yeah. I mean, Tom and Chris, does that sound right in terms of the legal requirements around, you know, the, the, the charter and authority of the ASA Advisory Committee?
Sure, Commissioner. I, I don't think that a recommendation, because the Advisory Committee obviously can't make a decision. I think it can make recommendations and I don't, it's not clicking in my head that the wording that was placed into the code or in the plan requires a recommendation first. I think it would be helpful, but I can also, I, I think probably the best way to go about it is to go ahead and schedule the next hearing and then I can go take a look at the code real quick. And if something jumps out at me or there's a big red light flashing, I can inform the board.
Same situation, right? Yeah. So anybody can raise their hand and say, hey, wait a minute, this doesn't sound right. So let's do that for next Wednesday and with the proposed document expected in our hands by the end of the week, available publicly to anybody that wants to see it. And then we'll see what, what next Wednesday looks like.
Okay.
Okay?
Sounds good.
Very good. A step towards the final deliberations. Is there anything else for this matter? Seeing none, that's our agenda items for the morning session here. We'll have a lunch recess and reconvene at 1:00. And we do have executive sessions at the end of the day also.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you.
The back nine, that's it.
Or it could be the third set, right? It's the third set.
Okay, welcome back to Chief County Board of Commissioners meeting for our afternoon session, October 27, 2021. Item number 11, update on Senate Bill 391, Rural Accessory Dwelling Units. Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Good morning.
Good afternoon, commissioners. For the record, Tanya Saltzman, senior planner. As promised, staff is back to discuss rural ADUs and the continuing progress of kind of enacting or figuring out the local aspect of Senate Bill 391. The memo that I provided for you has four kind of topics that I'll just go through. The first, sorry, I'm getting a little feedback here. The first is just a preliminary draft of code language. The second is a timeline. The third is just a little bit of discussion about translating state statute into local code. And then just the fourth part is to, the goal is to obtain board feedback on potential public process. So if it's okay with you, I'll just kind of go through those things in that order. Great. As you might recall, on September 29th, staff came before you to begin addressing some of the elements of Senate Bill 391 that we have local control over. There's some interpretations, definitions, that sort of thing. And as we all realize, it's quite a lot and they're all very intertwined. And we got some concrete, we decide, the board decided on certain concrete aspects and certain things were kind of still TBD. But based on that input, staff decided that it would be hopefully helpful to put that into kind of sample code, just to see what it would actually look like in the code process, because that is ultimately what's going to be up for public hearing in a little less than a year. So that's the attachment to the, to this memo. And so there's a few things where things are still to be determined, and I highlighted that in the code saying, option one, option two, for things like distance from existing dwelling, just those interpretations that we discussed last time. There's a few of those options out there, and I'm asking for kind of decisions on those aspects right now, but just kind of framing them all together to see how they all fit together. I also highlighted the provisions of, of the code that will be kind of dependent on wildfire issues, that we have to wait for state to do their thing and then it'll come back to us. So just trying to kind of categorize and organize everything so you can see what the, what the end game is. And then lastly, the, the third kind of part of that is the definition of adequate access for firefighting equipment, safe evacuation and staged evacuation. And I'll get back to that later, but that's the thing that staff wants to, with the board's permission, proceed to kind of coordinate with rural fire protection districts and try to get our arms around what, what those definitions mean so that we can provide some sort of language in the code that, that actually means something. So right now, that's, that's a placeholder as well. So that is the first part. It's just to see how things would all fit together. Just a side kind of clerical note, if anybody noticed that our code, our draft code looks different than it used to look, I don't know if you know, these, these types of things, I think about fonts a lot. This is what our new system is going to look like. So this is what future text amendments are going to look like with this sort of formatting. It's a little bit different than what it used to look like. Just putting that out there for people who think about fonts.
You're saying the font's different?
The font is different, the formatting is slightly different. Some people, this bothers, some people it doesn't. I just thought I'd just bring it to your attention.
I thought it was highly legible.
Yeah, no, it's a nice, clear font or whatever, too.
We can thank MuniCode for that. So that, all of our code has been translated over to that, that site. So this is extracted from there. So it's just appearing in a slightly different format from now.
Well, so that's good to understand, though. The tool, referring to the online code repository, has working code in there, too, as in it's not, obviously not adopted, but it can be version controlled or whatever.
Well, this, in this case, we actually had, we extracted it from the, we created something new based on that same formatting, because this chapter essentially doesn't exist yet.
Yeah.
So nobody can actually get to it on that website.
That's what I'm referring, yep.
Internally, yes. But our legal department translated all of our code that previously existed in another format into MuniCode, so we're thankful.
About that thick, right? Inch and a half?
Dave did it every, every, every letter himself.
Yeah.
But we much appreciate that. So that's the code, that's the sample code. Next, I'd like to talk about the timeline, just to give a sense of the big picture. And we've been alluding to various components of it, but I thought it would be helpful to just kind of spell out, spell it out in a, in a diagram, essentially. As we know, the wildfire-related provisions will not be solidified until June of 2022 at the latest. And depending on kind of what, what that looks like when these maps are created, there might be a little bit of additional coordination between staff and perhaps the fire districts, depending on how those map categories are defined. There might be certain actions for certain categories in the map and other actions for other categories regarding things like defensible space. So there might be some more things that staff will have to work out. But given that, we just, we proposed this timeline below that I'd just like to go, go over very briefly. So beginning in November, December of this year, staff envisions coordinating with the rural fire protection, protection districts, emergency services, the forester, to address that emergency access firefighting, equipment, safe evacuation areas, that whole clause. We anticipate it's going to be a little more complicated than, you know, just picking a number. There's a lot of nuance to that. We have to figure out how that might be enforceable, how that might be clearly and objectively delineated in the code. So we anticipate that that'll probably take several meetings with the fire protection districts. We have something tentatively scheduled already for the week of November 15th. Staff might attend the Central Oregon Fire Chiefs Association. I'm not sure if that's the correct name that you were just talking about in your previous agenda item, but we might coordinate using that, that meeting, which would be super helpful. So we envision that happening in November, December. December and January, we take that input and finalize the first draft.
Talk about that just a little bit more. I don't know if that's going to come up again, but the, you know, firefighting equipment, safe evacuation and staged evacuation areas. Is there any other legislative intent specifically, or is it kind of just down to those words? Do you have a feel for?
We do not, no. And I think therein lies the problem. It is very general. I don't know if Nick or Peter knows of any legislative intent that I am not aware of, but I don't think.
Because I got to imagine, you know, the counties, the land use, the geography, topology of, of counties are different. So I'm just envisioning a, a state legislator saying, I got a great idea, let's make sure that there's a staging area for evacuation. But I, what does that mean, you know?
That's what, that's what we're going to try to figure out.
Yeah, yeah.
Does that mean a?
That's the counties are.
A building nearby that where, you know, a school that you go to? I, I really don't know. And hopefully will the fire experts will kind of, and the emergency services people from the county hopefully will be able to give us some input. And, you know, perhaps there's other avenues. We can look for additional legislative intent and just try to figure out what, what it means and how we can.
And I got to imagine we could probably be a leader in this, because, you know, this discussion happens around Sun River. There's a lot of properties, there's, referring to Sun River proper and other lands around it. But the answer from emergency managers and the sheriff's office and the folks over the years is, it depends on what event's happening, what the winds are doing and what direction things are going. So you, it's hard to just say, oh, well, you know, this little parking lot over here is the place to go if something's happening. Because a wind-driven event could be from multiple directions and it's, or started in any direction, too. So, yeah, I just think it's, it's going to be interesting to debate all that, too.
Yeah, and how you actually put that into code. I mean, it's one thing to define it and talk about and say, we'll know it when we see it, or it depends on the.
Yeah.
How do we actually put that in code so that someone trying to build an ADU says, oh, okay, I, I have that, check, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
So that's, that's going to be, like you said, a very interesting process and challenge for staff. So we anticipate that might take a little bit of time.
And I, and I would add, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, for the record, Peter Gatazka, Community Development Director, I reached out to Association of Oregon Counties to understand if there was any legislative intent to some of these ambiguous terms. And there was no clarification relayed back to us. So just as you noted, Mr. Chairman, we are collectively going to define these terms presumably clear and objectively, if the board finds ultimately that they would like this to be a ministerial or development action. As, as the board knows, the moment you add interpretive matters to the code, it becomes a land use decision, a land use action. So we'll get there. But again, the, the legislature opened the door for us, for this county to explore rural ADUs, but they certainly didn't do us any additional favors by giving us clear terminology that would allow for a turnkey approach. So we're going to have to determine these various elements in ways that reflect our county in, in the coordination that Tanya just outlined.
So we, and we're looking at the schedule, which is what we're working on right now, we might want to, I mean, I don't know if we can plug it in, but I mean, the short legislative session may be a time to, to float some ideas and see if there's any way to get more clarity there, too, you know? I'm just, because some of this stuff could be litigated back and forth for a couple of years if we're not careful, which some people would like, but I'm just thinking, how can we get clarity?
And of course, we need that affordable workforce housing.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we can't, we can't afford to wait a couple of years.
Yeah, I think that's a, that's a really interesting idea about the, the short session, because as we've acknowledged, we're probably the first in line to do this. So we're, we're figuring it out. It would be nice to have input from kind of.
And I think it was mentioned as AOC already, to Chutes County's way out there. I think we were on the, yeah, one of the work session meetings, I think Peter, you and me were there, and I was on the call, but it was already acknowledged to Chutes County's way ahead of anybody on this.
And Representative Sika's, you know, part of our team, so hopefully if we need something, we can get it done.
I just, the only thing we have to be careful of is we asked for a lot of local control through this process, and so I think they gave it to us here. They've said, they've given us this, with, they've given us the requirement, and now it's up, it's going to be up to every county to determine what it means. And so I think this is the hard part of what, what local control looks like. And particularly in a county like the Chutes, where it's, there are so many various conditions in geographic areas and development patterns and high elevations and low, wet, dry, all kinds of different things. And so I, I think this is what local control looks like, is our making this tough decision.
Oh, well, and I was really kind of reverse engineering, you know? If we end up in late September 2022, and we're like, here it is, here's our package, and then can it be appealed? You know, I'm just thinking, is there another cycle or possibility of a cycle there? That's, that's how I was starting to talk, like it was.
Yeah, so just briefly continuing on the, on the schedule aspect, staff envisions some sort, and this is of course just up for, up for discussion, some sort of preliminary public outreach that not, isn't necessarily the, the hearing process, the formal public hearing process, based on kind of the options we've, we've hashed out in this code, the input we get about the emergency evacuation stuff, potentially running this out to the public with the help from the Planning Commission, as well as stakeholders, who I know are watching this very carefully, as they, as they should be, just to see what they think, you know? There might be some, some ideas that, that come out of that process that'll be super helpful in, in drafting the code. I know we've gotten, I get a ton of emails, as I'm sure the board does, about things. Someone just was asking about greenhouses, for instance. So I think just having that, that conversation, those community conversations could be a really helpful way to just get people on board from the beginning, not have their first exposure to this be at the public hearing. I think it, it'll be helpful to staff as well as the public. So that is an idea that we are floating before the board, to do that in the kind of winter into early spring. And then depending on, you know, just on what, what sort of input we get, we would, obviously, we would check in with the board again, and this is not to say we wouldn't check in with the board before that, but just following up on what kind of outreach we received, what are people's thoughts, any suggestions, any notable issues, that type of thing, and then kind of refining the code from there. And by the time we finish that, we anticipate, hopefully, those wildfire hazard maps, it would be June, and those would be finalized by the state. So we would have all the stuff that the county can touch. That would be as, you know, gone through a first level of vetting from the public, from the board. And so we'd be ready to kind of initiate that legislative process, depending on the, the nuances of the, the documents that come out of the state. Like I mentioned before, there might be a little bit of additional coordination, but our goal is to get everything kind of poised and ready to kind of go, go running as soon as we can. And then in the schedule, you'll see there's two tracks at the bottom. One envisions a first evidentiary hearing with the Planning Commission, and then another public, Board of County Commissioners' public hearing. By code, we can also just do what is considered a review with the Planning Commission. It is not a formal public hearing, and just have a single public hearing with the Board of County Commissioners. That makes the timeline a little bit shorter, not a huge amount, but I would say maybe a month, depending on how that all shakes out. So I just wanted to present those, those options for the board. You don't need to make a decision on that now, but just to give you a sense of the big picture. Anyone have any questions on proposed timelines or thoughts, or shall I keep going?
No, I really like the idea. I have just kind of the scope of the steps here. This is good to be able to publish it now, so we'll be able to look back at and say, okay, this is what we were thinking, or we need to add time here, or whatever.
If we can legally get away with just the review by the Planning Commission, listening to people yesterday in my COVA meeting, all the people that are so short of workforce housing, you know, every month counts for those, for people trying to find housing. So thank you for coming up with an, an option that has that.
Sure. I mean, this is, and I think the Planning Commission, you know, they're, they receive public, they're the kind of public entity, they will still receive comments and, and, you know, I will receive comments, there'll still be a substantial discussion, so they will still be able to discuss it. You know, it's, it's not, it's not bypassing them necessarily, it's just that one step in the formal process. Like, they will still provide their input and their expertise, because that's what we, we rely on them for. So I think it's a, it's a nice alternative to have a slightly expedited schedule. And then once we, once we do have an idea of kind of this, we will publish a general timeline on our website, because I, as I'm sure you do, get a ton of people asking about it. So we'll make this as public and transparent as possible in terms of our expectations for the timeline. So going on to Section C, and this kind of touches on what Peter already touched on, the challenges, challenges of translating state law into local code. I think Peter put it really well. The state put a, they, what did you say? They opened the door, but that was kind of the, they left a lot open, which is, as Nick said, very good, we're asking for local control, but it's navigating that line, is, is what exactly did you mean by that? And so this is, this is the challenge. And so staff suggests that in this translation process, you know, the least controversial, the, the most conservative interpretations are probably going to be the least vulnerable. And I gave an example of the, the 100-feet distance criteria. There was discussion last time about, you know, is it fully within that 100 feet, or are we going to just say that it, it's okay if it just touches that 100 feet? You know, logically, if you want to kind of make it as, as little interpretation, as little discretion involved, you would say that that would be, that should be fully within that 100 feet, because it's just less ambiguous. That's just a, an example, just something for consideration. There's not a ton of clauses that, or criteria that have this kind of wiggle room, but it's just something to be cognizant of in terms of vulnerabilities and challenges, because, you know, it is both a blessing and a curse to have this, this leeway to interpret things, but it could, you know, it could go either, either direction. All right. And then lastly, just more on the public process. I kind of already discussed it, but staff's goal, and I'll just kind of combine this with next steps, staff's goal is to first coordinate with the fire, for the evacuation emergency criteria, and then embark on a public process with the Planning Commission early next year. And we envision that as probably a couple of open houses in the way we've done them before, perhaps an online survey, story map, you know? We have all of these tools that we've been kind of trying to perfect over the last year, year or two. That is staff's recommendation to go that direction, but we're certainly open to discussion on if the board wants to just, you know, make these decisions about certain of these options and just go ahead with it, or use this time that's kind of forced upon us because of that, that state wildfire timeline, to reach out to the public and get some thoughts on some or all of the criteria. And this, of course, does not also need to be decided today, but we're just putting it out there that that's the way that staff into recommends proceeding, or thinks would be effective for, for the board and for the public.
So, I mean, let's talk about that a little bit, you know? Is there a public outreach effort in the middle of this process that's going to be kind of the pre-official land use public hearing, obviously? And even before the Planning Commission is officially has a final proposed package? And I definitely want to, you know, make sure the community understands the content of what's possible, you know? Because the, what the state legislature has defined are some of those, you know, terms, but we're going to putting them in code, which gets a lot more real. So, I mean, I definitely want as many people as possible to be able to digest, you know, because there'll be builders or developer types or, or property owners. There'll be categories of people, obviously, that are going to be like, oh, is that? There'll be categories of people, obviously, that are going to be like, oh, is that what that means? You know, they, they're really going to want to know. They need to understand it's draft form, could evolve, you know, that's. So just try to put some direction to it.
There is, in the timeline, there's this public outreach piece in the winter 2022. I mean, are you, you're not suggesting something separate from that. You're, you're just, you're just kind of putting some details on what you think that looks like. Okay. Yeah, no, I, I think, yeah, the, the, the public outreach process should be about helping people understand what the legislation said, helping them understand what decisions we have to make, and helping them understand how to, how to weigh in.
And how, how, what we're talking about, because some of these are going to be choices, fit into the culture of central Oregon, you know, just like we talked about. I mean, the, the rural parcels are platted already, not a lot of subdivision going to happen in the rural. So then the, the pattern is already out there. What's the culture of that pattern, you know, could, are we going to, you know? The choices we're going to make is going to affect that, you know, so.
And don't forget our thousands of illegal ones that perhaps will be made legal by this when we get down to the final, you know, is it going to be, you know, if it has to be within that 100 feet? You know, everything within the 100 feet, or can we just have a corner at the 100 feet? And then, of course, I've talked to people that their ADU is 150 feet. So it's like, how much can you stretch the tape? It's really hard.
And, and we were just, you know, this item C on, on, in this staff memo talks about how if we, if we, if we take the, if we take the flexibility that's been granted to us, and, and we push it to the limit, it, it may actually slow us down in the long run. So I, I, we will, we will have to balance, we will have to balance kind of that desire to bring people out of the shadows that are in the shadows with, you know, putting forward a, a program that, that meets the legislative intent and, and that no one slows us down too much on, on getting passed.
I, I think staff thinks that outreach is, you can never have too much outreach, that's what we do. But I think especially, this is a big, a big change. This is a big change in the county, and I think everybody seems to know about it. It's, you know, random people are just talking about it who don't know a lot of, about zoning or planning. You know, it's, it's in the conversation, it's already, it's out there. So I think us kind of addressing that and acknowledging it, and it's, and trying to clarify, perhaps we, you know, bring in some staff from our building department or staff from the fire, some fire experts or that sort of thing, and really get people as educated as possible on, on this, so they can make informed testimony if they choose to at the actual public hearing. I think that's always good to have people educated as much as possible about the, you know, it's, it's not a simple, it's not a simple set of code, even though it's just two pages long, so.
Are, are you hearing from, you know, individual rural property owners who might be interested in, in building an ADU? Or it's not just the, it's not just the land use geeks, like the people who are?
I, I would say, and I was saying this in our staff meeting earlier today, every morning when I wake up, I probably have at least between two and five emails asking, can they build their ADU yet? Or what are, you know, asking me some questions, and people are doing their homework, which I very much appreciate, you know, asking about the timeline, asking about certain provisions, people, just individual homeowners, people looking to buy property, that sort of thing. So all kinds of inquiries, I don't, I think they're just, yeah, property owners.
Okay.
So we have like 2,000 lots that actually qualify for a single-family residence plus an ADU that, you know, nothing's been built on them. I think that was like the number, and that's, that's huge. So I'm, I'm glad you're getting that kind of a daily.
Oh, yes.
That's, that's wonderful, and it's really, it could be a huge difference.
Yeah, and we'll aim, you know, we're aiming to keep as much on our website up there as possible to just keep people apprised of where we are in the decision-making and, you know, just, you know, I want to make it clear to kind of manage, manage expectations as well, that just because you're in that zone and you have a two-acre property doesn't mean here's your, you know, there's a lot of stuff that the board is working through. So we're, we're trying to manage the communications as best we can and educate people as best we can. So if there isn't further discussion, staff will, can embark on our emergency evacuation access journey, and then we can report back and then look into our, our public outreach efforts and kind of check back and, and whenever that's timely and relevant to the board.
I, go ahead. No, no, please.
In this, in this draft that, that's been developed, I did, I had one, at least one question I wanted to ask about vacation occupancy?
Yes.
So vacation, in the definitions, vacation occupancy has all of the following characteristics, including this, this item C period, the period of authorized occupancy does not exceed 45 days. So is that for one visitor? Or is that for sequential visitors over a year?
That came directly from the RRS. This was referenced in Senate Bill 391, it says, you know, vacation occupancy as defined in ORS. So my, I'd have to look into that. My guess is that that's intended for kind of one person, I mean, one party. You know, I think they're trying to stop rentals that are less than 45 days, weekend stays, that type of thing. Right? But I can, I can certainly look into.
Yeah, that, thank you. I know this stuff is, it's a, having, having, you know, having a number of vacation rentals in my neighborhood, I've tried to learn about the city's rules, and, and it, it's still quite, quite difficult to understand it, so.
Yes, yes, and, and, you know, we could certainly, I think, add some clarifying language, if that's, if that's helpful later on in the process.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So along those lines, just one of the topics, minimum acreage referring to five or 10-acre choice in certain townships, southern Deschutes County, it looks like. Is that a, did that just come up relative to our history in Deschutes County? Is there another reference to that that brought that up?
Do you mean the, the definition of the area?
Uh, no, option one, option two, five acres or 10 acres.
Mr. Chairman, that was a, these are questions that are in coordination with our environmental soil supervisor, just want to, we, we know that, that groundwater protection is critically important in that part of our county. So those options that have been identified for consideration were something that we wanted to bring to your attention, not looking for an answer now, but recognizing that not all two-acre and larger proper, properties are, are similar. It's similar to what Nick noted, our county is so geographically and geologically diverse that for the board's consideration eventually will be to whether or not increasing that minimum parcel size should be increased for that area south of Sud River in the unincorporated areas.
So the, the two-acre, the two-acre threshold, that was in the legislation?
Correct.
And then we're trying to decide whether in this groundwater-sensitive area, we need like a larger minimum?
Correct, and, and certainly when it's appropriate, you know, we can invite Todd Cleveland here to articulate, you know, what, what's the difference between five and 10 acres, what would be his recommendation? But we're acknowledging that there are some concerns in that part of the county for two-acre lots, just given the, the, the density that exists there and has been there for, for decades.
Well, I'd be interested in some analysis, because I mean, I understand there's, you know, thousands of one-acre lots, so I really, that, there are that many between two and five? I guess I don't have a feel for that at all. And then also, then another whole path down there may be a, a specific requirement for nitrate-reducing systems, which is another whole concept, but, you know, maybe that's, that's a prudent thing. If there's, you know, a primary dwelling and accessory dwelling on an existing system, systems requirement to be upgraded to nitrate-reducing, and some are and some aren't down there. So there's, that may be a real logical path also.
Great point.
If we, if we're going ahead and digging in on, on this, I mean, I guess, I, I would also just share that I, I took some time to pace out 100 feet the other day, to, to really try and get a, a sense of it. And, you know, after I paced it out, I, you know, I felt like, wow, you know, 100 feet is actually pretty far. Like, it's a pretty, pretty good distance. And then, you know, I live in a, you know, in, in a, yeah, originally, single-family, you know, resident-zoned neighborhood in the city. But our lots, you know, the, the lots on my block are about 50 feet wide. So you, you take that in context, it means that within 100 feet, you could have, you know, within 100 feet of my, my lot, you could have a whole nother lot, and then build on the, the next one over and have that much distance between, between structures and still be within 100 feet. So, you know, I, I just want to throw that out, that, that I, you know, 100 feet is a lot of space, and the, the only reason I wouldn't just immediately push for, whole thing should be within 100 feet, because, because that's probably the, what's going to get us the least challenge in terms of, you know, people asking whether we're, we're following the intent of the legislation or not, is that we do have a, a number of, a number of ADUs that are already out there that are in the, you know, we want to come out of the shadows, and we need to think about what we can do to, to, to accommodate that.
Commissioner, I'll just offer, years ago, when we talked about weddings, and we were talking about separation distances, we wanted to give everybody a perspective of 100 feet. 100 feet is sort of about the back of this wall to about where Café 97 is in the lobby, the back wall there. So you can see, we, we tried to have a real example right here, so that gives you a sense of about what 100 feet feels like.
If we open that up, it would go pretty much all the way to the, to the far wall of DeArmond Drive.
It, yeah, and I support keeping both those options in there for now. It's going to be six months before we're going to start to really have to hone in on that one.
And then, but the other thing is, you have to think of 100 feet from like the septic system and the well, and, you know, there's all those other extraneous factors where it could actually be added to the property.
We'll get some good scenarios out there and see what makes sense. Okay, so yeah, not a lot of decisions today, a little bit more conversation, bringing it down the path a little.
Yeah, so we will begin coordinating with them about the emergency evacuation, and we'll report back as, as necessary, and, yeah, I think we're going down a good path.
Mm-hmm. It's great that we're, it's great that we looked over this timeline and that you can start to put that out to the public, so people have a understanding of where they'll have a chance to learn and plug in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, according to my note from the 7/14 meeting, we were going to meet in three months. So I think, isn't this like our second meeting since, yeah. It's great, Tanya, thank you so much. We, really, we, we need to be prepared.
Thank you for all your help on this.
Okay.
You.
Thank you. So are there any other items?
I was at the COVA meeting yesterday with Nick, it was his first meeting there, and we were missing several representatives of the community, but clearly, everyone is short on employees, you know, it's across all industries, but clearly theirs is highly impacted. So they've, they've got a, a lot of new branding, which looks lovely, their new videos are great, you know. They've been doing a lot of work during COVID, and it was good to hear.
Okay. I was able to meet Commissioner from Lake County in Christmas Valley yesterday. This was kind of that mentor relationship that AOC promotes. So I was at Barry Schellenberger yesterday, and I'd crossed paths with him just a little bit over the year so far, but we're, so we just spent some time together in person. So it'll be nice to be able to see him again down at the AOC Annual Convention in November also.
Next month.
Yep.
Just following up from the joint meeting we had with the City of Sisters, they, they made, you know, they, they've now sent us a formal letter with proposed investments around homelessness and around affordable housing. And I just wanted to, to mention that a, a number of the, the, the shelter and affordable housing advocates and organizations in Sisters had a lot of questions about what the City of Sisters submitted, and they, they were asking about, well, does this replace our request? Or do you look at our request and, and their recommendation? Or, you know, at the same time, or, or things like that? So, yeah, I just want to flag that, I, I think that there's still some substantial discussions to be had about that, particularly since, you know, one of the, one of the big, big differences was, you know, that there was, there was a winter, the winter-warming shelter advocates in, in Sisters are, you know, are telling us that they only have two months of this winter covered, and, you know, you can see how cold it is today. And the city, you know, made a recommendation of, you know, setting aside $50,000 a year to support that activity in Sisters, but I, I don't think that they necessarily had the best idea, best grasp of what the actual possibilities are for making the winter-warming shelter happen this winter in, you know, those other months, you know, you know, November, February, March. So I, I, I think there's still, still some deliberation for us to have about what we want, what we want to do there, and, you know, I, I just wanted to flag that and, and ask if we wanted to, like, pick a time to, to have that discussion.
Our put discussion?
Yeah.
Put it in the same, same time that comes around?
Yeah, I mean, the, at least for the winter-warming shelter, it was pretty much a, it was, it was a funding question, so. So, yeah, that, that would be a reasonable time to do that.
And our sheriff's office did get back and say that using the Mid-Orient Credit Union spot in the middle of that building was not something that they were interested in. And originally, I thought of that, it, I think we would, you know, the revenue is like 1,700 a month, I believe? Anyway, they really did not want that to happen, so we have to keep working on it, because it is getting colder.
Yeah, I mean, did, did you learn anything more from them about, about what their concerns were? I mean, even for like a month this winter sometime?
No, I was actually going to talk to one of my friends who is a member of the Episcopal Church and see if they're part of that network of churches or not, because, anyway, I need to do that. I'll, I'll give her a call today and see if their church is participating. I could definitely ask her and see, you know, if we could get, you know, a couple more churches, and there's, there's another pastor that I could call too, and just make sure that, you know, not one church has, you know, takes the whole burden, but definitely the community, I know, wants to step up.
Yeah, and the churches that are, that are in the mix, that have each committed a month, I mean, the only reason that they weren't willing to commit more was because it seems like they have other programming that they have to, that would conflict with that. And, and they need to, you know, they have, they have lots of demands. They each have lots of demands to, to meet.
And the other part of that issue is that their members of their congregation are older, and so they are a bit, you know, more vulnerable, or that's how they felt about it last year. So I'll check with those two people that I know and just see if there's, if I can increase that, you know, responsibility from the community.
Okay, it would be, it would be great if, if there's a way to, to, to meet the need for this year without buying, sort of buying people a building. It'd be great for us to, if anything we can do to help them figure that out.
Okay, I wrote it down, I will do it today.
Anything else on other items? So seeing that, at this time, we'll go to executive session. Nope, yeah.
I can make two points on that. The executive session for litigation is not needed today. And then mostly for the benefit of Commissioner Chang, because Commissioner And then mostly for the benefit of Commissioner Chang, because Commissioners Adair and DeBoe heard this before. Executive sessions regarding, regarding labor negotiations are the one that you can exclude the.